This is John Steen. I wanted to call to order the CPS Energy Board of Trustees meeting for June 29th, 2020. And we'll begin by a roll call by our General Counsel. Go ahead, Ms. Schuman.
Yes, sir. Chair Steen?
Here.
Dr. Matthews?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Ms. Gonzalez? Here. Mayor Nuremberg?
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you, Ms. Schuman. David, do you want to take over at this point?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chair Steen. Good afternoon. My name is David. I'll be your moderator for the event this afternoon. The CPS Energy Board of Trustees thanks you for joining their June board meeting via teleconference. The board is always interested in hearing public input. If you have pre-registered to speak during the public comment portion of the agenda, please press star three on your phone keypad. Again, if you have pre-registered to speak during the public comment portion of the agenda, please press star three on your phone keypad to be put into queue to speak. A member of our staff will take your name. When you hear Chair Steen say your name, you will be live on the call for two minutes. You will hear a bell sound to indicate that you have 10 seconds remaining. For all others who speak during this meeting, please remember to identify yourself before speaking. I will now turn the call over to Chair Steen.
Item two on our agenda is the safety message. And Mayor Nuremberg, we'd ask you to take an opportunity to talk to your CPS Energy family with the safety message.
So, good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to just give you a brief update of where we are with our situation here in San Antonio. As you may know, there has been a surge in new cases of COVID-19 since the beginning of June. And so, we are in a period of great stress in our hospital and medical capacity right now. And as a result, we are working with the governor, as well as our community in general, to make sure that we are introducing the proper protocols to ensure that we're curbing that trend. Currently, what we see in the hospitals is of the greatest concern, and that is an unabated acceleration of the number of cases in the hospitals, the number of cases in ICU, and the number of cases in ventilators. That can be attributed to a number of different reasons. I'll characterize it as simply people have let their guard down with regard to this virus as a result of a lot of different things, including Texas opening, as well as a relaxation of things like face mask wearing and physical distancing. Because of all that, the judge and I are again on nightly during the week, reminding people about the proper behavior during a pandemic, providing access to our public health professionals, as well as assuring people of where we are. We have probably a couple more weeks left of the sharp rise until we start to see the effects of the orders on requiring masks in businesses. And, you know, between now and then, we are really working to operationalize our surge management in the hospitals, as well as our alternative care sites. In the meantime, we are also working to reestablish some of the protocols that we had in place in the earlier phases of opening, including just today, the reduction of restaurant occupancy to 50%. Friday, bars were closed. We also limited mass gatherings to no more than 100 people outside, which is the most restrictive per state law at this point. And that includes a number of exceptions that are by order of the state as well. There's an ongoing and active dialogue between myself and our partner cities, the major urban areas of Texas, and we are actively communicating with the governor about some recommendations that our public health professionals are advising to help us get a handle on this latest wave. The best thing you can do right now is if you don't need to be out and about, if you're not really engaging in something that's necessary, go home. If you can work from home, work for home. And, you know, and if you do have to be out of your home, wear a face mask, maintain physical distancing, and do all the other things that the public health professionals have told us to do from the very start. This is the life we're going to live for a little while until there is better therapeutics and a vaccine available, which is something that we can't really tell at this point when that's going to happen. We just have to do what we can do to live as normally as possible with the precautions necessary with a very contagious virus out there. So, we are going to get through this. It's just requiring us to double down and remind ourselves about the work that we've done in prior months, and we will prevail. So, thank you all very much for the opportunity. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mayor, thanks for the update, and thanks for your leadership. And we also want to ask our CEO, Paula Gold Williams, for a safety message.
Thank you, Chair Steen, and to the entire board. I continue to thank the mayor and the judge on behalf of all of our 3,100 employees, and also to appreciate what the governor is trying to do in opening up the state. But we did see quite a bit of pressure at the end of last week inside the company that correlated with community spread. We saw an uptick in company spread. We moved from three, which was about two weeks before that, we had three diagnosed cases to 29 at the end of the week on Friday. It was probably the fastest increase, again, that we had seen, and that was before the weekend. I will say that the weekends are tough and the holidays are tough because people are trying to move back to a sense of normalcy, trying to get back to where they were, including our employees. We are staying vigilant as a leadership team and reminding them of the proper approaches that the mayor is talking about, that wear your mask all the time when you're out, and practice physical distancing. And we encourage, even through the Father's Day weekend, to encourage our employees to stay contacted through using their technology and their phones. I will say it's vigilant. We have set out a COVID safe health and safety policy internally as well, again, to indicate our expectations while employees are working. And then we encourage, when they are away from work, to continue to practice safe physical distancing and then just staying in contact with technology. So, I will close with that, and we continue to pray for our city. We continue to want to be helpful and resource and share information. We understand that there are only 3,100 of our employees, all which are critical. We are an essential business, and we are working as hard as we can to be helpful to our customers and community, and make sure that we are there to be able to serve day after day.
Paul, I want to say on behalf of the board, and really the company, thank you for your outstanding leadership throughout all this. I know that there's been a lot of stress, and it's really been challenging, and thank you for all your doing.
Thank you, sir.
Let's move to Agenda Item Three, the invocation, and it's Mr. Leroy Pettis.
We are thankful for this day that you have given us its blessings, its opportunities, its challenges. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing important responsibilities. We ask that you would guide our thoughts and our actions so that we may have a successful meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. Help us to accomplish our goals while displaying your character. Help us to do good, to be honored, to serve others, and to fulfill our obligations for our community. We pray these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Pettis. The next item is public comment, which provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on any of this meeting's posted agenda items. We'll follow a similar process as to what we have done for in-person board meetings. I'll invite pre-registered speakers to speak in the order in which they registered, so we may hear their comments. They may only address the board on CPS energy-related business listed on the posted agenda for this meeting. For this meeting, we have 14 registered speakers, who will each have two minutes to speak. Speakers will hear a chime sound when 10 minutes remain, letting them, I'm sorry, when 10 seconds remain, letting them know when they should wrap up their comments. Speakers should state their first and last name, what organization or group they represent, if applicable, and indicate the agenda item number they're going to speak about. Our first speaker is Rafael Garcia, followed by Alice Canostaro Garcia.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I am Rafael Garcia, and I want to thank you for having me today, the Board of Trustees, as well as the mayor. I am with Sierra's Club, and what I will be advocating for today regarding CPS Energy is the Flex Step Plan. And I just wanted to share a bit about my story and how we reflect upon this, and hopefully work for a better tomorrow in helping others. You know, a little bit about myself is that I have a form of muscular dystrophy called spinal muscular atrophy. And what tends to happen with that is we suffer from a lot of respiratory problems that affect us in our day-to-day lives. So, needless to say that, you know, sustainable power and renewable power, as well as clean energy and efficiency, does take a matter in our health and our day-to-day living. You know, regarding me, you know, I have a lot of perspective when it comes to this because, you know, in my health, I do require a lot of healthcare, you know, when it comes to ventilators, breathing machines, oxygen monitors, and nebulizer treatments. Needless to say, that power is not only life-saving for me, but it is an essential living capacity that helps me continue out through my life. You know, doctors would tell me that I would have an age expectancy in the age of 10 years old only to survive, you know. But it is because of these machines that my capacity and my age range is 24 years old as of now. You know, needless to say, that's a miracle, and I thank God for that, you know. I'm truly blessed. But what affects me, you know, is other things as well. You know, there have been situations where I am, you know, on a ventilator and, you know, battling pneumonia, bronchitis, and other respiratory issues. And, you know, my vent is required, you know, 13 tons hours on a ventilator, you know, at night. And, you know, there's been situations where the power goes out. And, you know, families, you know, that are struggling financially, they do need the power sources and the resources to help them. Now, it's important.
Your time is up. You have exhausted your two minutes allotted for your public comment. We thank you for your participation. You will be muted at this time. Mr. Garcia, thank you very much. And let's move to Alice Canostaro Garcia, and she'll be followed by DeeDee Balmaras.
Hello. My name is Alice Cano... Okay, may I speak? My name is Alice Canostaro Garcia with Innogyamia, speaking on 6B. Thank you, Mayor, for keeping San Antonio safer than other parts of the country. I'm presenting excerpts from an article, "A Plan for the South," published last week in Earthers. The South is being hit particularly hard by climate change, more intense heat waves and floods. Despite this, the region is lagging behind the rest of the nation on climate policy. But a new analysis has pathways to catch up. The inaugural climate report from the Southern Economic Advancement Project, a new think tank, examines decarbonization policies in southern states. Most of those states have not adopted targets for renewable energy or electric vehicle use. Climate inaction in the south is due in large part to fossil fuel and utility companies' stronghold on state politics. Those fossil fuel companies have essentially captured the political system and ensured that entrenched powers that be can continue reaping profits. Mark Paul, who co-authored the report, is a fellow at the Roosevelt Institute, told Earthers. The south is filled with hotspots of pollution from fossil-based energy and is home to the five states with the highest utility burden, meaning residents pay the highest percentage of their household income toward energy costs. A tough way states could do all this is to phase out coal. The dominant energy source in the south, and it accounts for 40% of the region's pollution. But coal plants are more expensive to run than the renewable counterparts, and also have higher maintenance costs. According to the report, replacing most coal-fired power stations throughout the region with wind or solar would be cheaper by 2025 than keeping the existing plants open. I want to say boom. By adopting renewable and clean energy standards, states can incentivize utility companies to move away from coal. Deploying renewables creates a lot of jobs because manufacturing that technology, installing that technology, maintaining it, all takes people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Canostaro Garcia. So, next we have DeeDee Balmaras, and she'll be followed by Greg Harmon.
Good afternoon. This is DeeDee Balmaras with Public Citizen. In early May, I emailed Kathy Garcia a list of recommendations from Climate Action San Antonio Coalition for the rate advisory committee. I asked for feedback and thoughts on those recommendations, and have yet to receive an answer. The coalition put a lot of time and consideration into these recommendations in the spirit of collaboration with CPS Energy. We would hope, in keeping with your people-first slogan, that we would have received a response. In these unprecedented times of COVID, the community deserves an opportunity to voice their concern on how rates will affect them as they struggle to recover financially from the health crisis. They also need an opportunity to offer input on how CPS Energy generates power. CPS Energy customers deserve to know when the utility and the city of San Antonio will commit to the goals of the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. Close the polluting, climate change-driving Spruce Plant. Thank you all, and have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Balmaras. We'll move to Greg Harmon, and he'll be followed by Jim Collins.
Yeah, this is Greg Harmon at the Sierra Club. You hear a lot of background noise. It's because I'm a fairly new EV owner, and we stopped to charge, and essentially 75% of all the charging stations we've been finding around the city are broken. So, it took me an extra 30, 40 minutes to get to a charging station. So, between the city and CPS, I hope you guys can begin to invest more time and resources into this electrification and transportation. But I called in to talk about the Flex Step Program, Item Six. I know there's an update on the bridge, the one-year bridge over to the next tranche, which will be a 10-year program. And the Sierra Club recently contracted out with Optimal Energy to study national municipal utilities and what they're doing around energy efficiency, weatherization, and the like, and found a number of recommendations we think will improve what we're hearing, early indications from the CPS leadership on what our investment will be. So, and we'll be circulating that among the trustees. I believe the council and mayor have that in hand. And so, generally, it's looking at measuring success through peak energy time, looking for higher and more ambitious targets in terms of those savings, and stronger weatherization programs for low-income communities, as well as decentralized solar into those areas. This is more critical than ever, and I personally think that there's a lot of opportunity to match in this area, especially in terms of, you know, being able to run the coal plant less. If we shoot high for the reductions, it's going to cut our power production. We also have an opportunity through this program to invest in people's homes, keep their bills affordable, and get a hold on this eviction crisis. We know that in the spirit of Black Lives Matter, that African-Americans are dying at an outsized rate than other groups, particularly white Americans, and that's related to them being frontline communities. And in fact, COVID now riding, we know, on particulate matter and pollution. So, this is an urgent issue, and we hope to see you take action and take more ambitious targets with Flex Step, especially when it comes to investing in our communities. We know that thousands upon thousands, tens of thousands of people are having their energy cut off over the summer and have been over the last 10 years. We know that through open records requests of CPS Energy, in spite of, you know, Paula's suggestion that there was a program in place that limited those during the hottest time of the summer. The hottest time of the summer apparently is over 100 degrees. So, we're seeing all...
Your time is up. You've exhausted your two minutes allotted for your public comment. We thank you for your participation. You will be muted at this time. So, next, thank you, Mr. Harmon. Next, we have Jim Collins, and he'll be followed by John Bobe.
Greetings and good afternoon. My name is Jim Collins. I'm the Director of Energy Markets at Microsoft. I am representing Microsoft with my comments, and I'm referencing Agenda Item 10, the Green Tariff. Microsoft would like to thank CPS Energy for their dedicated team and all the efforts over the past year in creating the Green Tariff. Microsoft views the Green Tariff as very innovative and showcases the creativity of CPS Energy. In January 2020, Microsoft committed to using 100% renewable energy for its data center operations. Microsoft views the Green Tariff as a critical vessel to help transition Microsoft's data center operations within the city of San Antonio to 100% renewable energy. Further, the Green Tariff will help the city of San Antonio and CPS Energy achieve some of the goals within the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan for the community. Microsoft looks forward to continued future collaboration with CPS Energy on other components of the flexible path, which will help lead to a brighter and cleaner future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Let's move to John Bobe, followed by Kate Moffett.
Thank you for having me. Again, my name is John Bobe. Good afternoon, everyone. Again, my name is John Bobe. I'm a Global Warming Solutions intern with Environment Texas. We are nearing a critical point in time in which we must begin making difficult decisions about the future of energy, specifically concerning its effects on the environment. One such decision being the closing of Spruce Coal Plant. CPS Energy, in my opinion, should close the Spruce Coal Plant for a myriad of reasons, not limited to the economic inefficacy or the negative environmental consequences. Running the Spruce Coal Plant requires San Antonians to spend money on dirty energy sources when we should invest in cleaner alternatives. CPS has worked to encourage the growth of solar within the city, hoping to prove that the sun's energy can power the city of San Antonio. To help avert the worst effect of global warming, CPS should go further and help to drive the switch to 100% clean and renewable energy. That means closing down the Spruce Power Plants and pursuing investments in alternative energy sources, such as wind and solar. Furthermore, the Spruce Plants will have worse economic outcomes than renewable energy sources.
We seem to be having trouble hearing the speaker. There's a bad connection with this phone. David, what should we do? Should we go on to the next?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would tell Mr. Bobe, it started sounding bad, and then you went out altogether. So, we apologize for that, but we're going to have to move on. So, let's move to Kate Moffett, followed by Claudia Diaz.
Hi, I'm Kate Moffett. I'm from Mexico. I'm an environmental activist working alongside Environment Texas to address issues like global warming and air pollution across Texas. As one of Texas municipal utilities, CPS has the power to change how we power our lives. Which is why I would like to revitalize with two recommendations for how CPS Energy can do that. Firstly, as San Antonians grapple with post-COVID economics, we are alongside the game to obtain a clean and healthy future, it is critical that CPS Energy provide opportunities for public participation, including on the risk of adversity at their community. Families deserve opportunity to provide input on things like rates and power generation, and CPS should facilitate that. Secondly, CPS Energy should pursue the goals stated in San Antonio's Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, including planning and implementing the necessary steps to achieve citywide carbon neutrality as soon as possible. While city climate plans call for carbon neutrality by 2050, when it comes to climate change, we don't have that much time. As a young person, the burden of the responsibility to stop climate change is already so great. The more we delay the inevitable, the greater the impact climate change will have on the world. Right now, we are seemingly affected by climate change. With increased temperature, there are more droughts and heat waves. Not so long ago, Hurricane Harvey devastated parts of our state. This is only the beginning of how climate change will negatively impact our world and future generations. The first step towards achieving this goal, CPS Energy should immediately close the Spruce Coal Plants. Coal harms our communities. Electricity generation vehicles emit numerous air pollutants that cause particulate matter, sulfur dioxide, mercury, lead, and other heavy metals, as such as VOCs and nitric oxides. The latter combine with VOCs and sunlight to form ground-level ozone or smog, hurting public health and contributing to slower pollution reduction progress. San Antonio deserves clean air, and CPS should help the city achieve exactly that. This time, we will have dirty energy in the past, and start heading towards a fair future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moffett. Our next speaker will be Claudia Diaz, followed by John Agatha.
Hi, my name is Claudia Diaz, and I'm a lifelong San Antonian. I'm speaking as a citizen and a voter. I was born right here at the Baptist Hospital, where my father worked for decades, putting both my sister and me through Princeton University, where I earned a degree in politics and another in Latin American Studies. I work at a small investment firm here downtown, and I'm going to speak on Item Eight. Throughout this global perfect storm, very few things have gone smoothly, and nothing has been resolved. Blame and responsibility are regularly handed off like a football. San Antonio already enjoys the privilege of advice and leadership from the esteemed Citizens Advisory Committee. Meanwhile, this suggested rate advisory committee is yet another buffer between the citizens of San Antonio and action. It's unnecessary bureaucracy. It's wasteful and unaffordable. San Antonio is in dire straits politically, racially, financially. This cannot be fixed by inserting another committee, another layer of talk, when what we need is action. We cannot afford or need to pay for another set of opinions, nor the delays that slow us down when those opinions disagree. This is important today, as our esteemed Citizens Advisory Committee already includes wise counsel and is ready to proceed. We just don't need another. Thank you, members of CPS Energy, for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz. Let's move on to John Agatha, followed by Angelo Pardo. Mr. Agatha?
Good afternoon. My name is John Agatha. I'm a local musician, speaking on Agenda Number Eight. I want to stay in my opposition to forming the Rate Advisor Committee. As our economy struggles under the heavy financial devastation that has plagued our community, the last thing we need is one more layer of citizen bureaucracy that is being proposed for political expediency. Instead, I suggest that esteemed trustees of this venerable institution place proper faith in the already-existing Citizens Advisory Committee. We do not need to burden you, staff, and the citizens of San Antonio with the cost of another committee. These are times that require smart decisions and not political grandstanding. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Juan Agater, y soy residente y músico en la ciudad de San Antonio. Estoy muy opuesto a la formación del Rate Advisory Committee. Nuestra economía ha sufrido un golpe financiero demasiado duro. Ahora no es el tiempo de agregar dificultades a nuestra gran ciudad. La última cosa en estos tiempos que debemos añadir es otro nivel de burocracia ciudadana para el beneficio del poder político. Les suplico y recomiendo que pongan fe ustedes, los líderes de esta institución, City Public Service, en el comité que ya existe y que ya está listo para trabajar. El ser... Service, en el comité que ya existe y que ya está listo para trabajar, the Citizens' Advisory Committee. No necesitamos más costo de otro comité pagado por los ciudadanos de San Antonio. Estos tiempos son muy difíciles. Te requieren decisiones inteligentes y no ambiciones políticas. Thank you very much. Gracias.
Thank you, Mr. Agatha. Our next speaker is Angelo Pardo, followed by Samantha Flores. Again, I'm calling for Angelo Pardo.
Hello? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Okay. I'm also a resident of San Antonio, a lifelong resident.
Oh, we missed the first part of that. Could you repeat your name?
My name is Angelo Pardo. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay. Am I used to that? Okay. I'm speaking on behalf of poor families, lifelong families of San Antonio. As we all know, inflation and executive salaries have gone up over the past years and decades, and working-class salaries have remained the same. So all these houses, homes, like in my neighborhood Highland Park, a lot of the legacy families have the houses that are falling apart. We would like to participate in weatherization programs, but, for example, to give us a window unit doesn't work if our whole electricity can't handle a window unit. My family has to put foil on the windows to control cooling during the wintertime. Since we can only plug in one window unit, we all sleep in one room during the summer. During the wintertime, my dad's house has gas heaters, which I guess are not even up to code, but we can't really, and it's really unsafe. So we can't turn on the gas heaters. When we do, and we're forced to turn on the gas heaters, the bill is ridiculous. So I guess I would like to see maybe lots more funding and maybe some sort of collaboration with the housing programs. My father was lucky enough to get the lottery of getting the owner-occupied rehab program, which is life-changing for my family. We're getting central heat and air. They're putting insulation in the attic. This is a big deal. So I would just like to see CPS participating and helping with programs like that. And if you wonder where the money would go to, because these are costly repairs, there's always money in the police department. We would like to participate in solar paneling, but our roof is not, it can't handle that if we also applied for the under-one-roof program, and the person who came out said that we had the original wooden shingles, which is extremely common in our older neighborhoods. So we don't even qualify for the under-one-roof program to get a new roof to get solar panels. So I've never spoken to you guys before, so I apologize for being nervous, and I'm just really grateful to be able to speak to you guys. But please consider, our family is not the only family that does this.
Time's up. You have exhausted your two minutes allotted for your public comment. We thank you for your participation. You will be muted at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Pardo. The next speaker is Samantha Flores, followed by Celia Valias.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, and it's Samantha Flores. I'm a lifelong resident of San Antonio. I'm an artist. I am disabled, and my thoughts for this meeting are that in order for CPS Energy to truly serve its community, it needs to include the public in its decision-making. And until this point, we haven't had a lot of transparency. CPS is supposed to be a, is supposed to serve its community and be accountable to people and not profits. And considering that here in Texas, we are losing money on the coal and gas industry where we could be transitioning to natural resources in a way that would be beneficial to our state and more cost-effective for its people, I think it's necessary for CPS to have real communication with the public and that the customers need to have the power to drive change within CPS Energy. We would like an update on the Rate Advisory Committee or a timeline for when an update can be expected. Thank you for your time. I would like to yield my time.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. Let's move to Celia Valias, followed by Carol Mendoza.
Hi, my name is Celia Valias, and I am with the Texas Organizing Project. I'm here to talk on Item 4 in the Rate Advisory Committee. I wanted to remind CPS Energy that they are supposed to be responsible and responsive to the public they serve. As COVID-19 cases continue to grow, it continues to worsen social inequalities, and showing that now more than ever, it is imperative to center community needs by including the public in your decisions and to be transparent. This includes including the public in your decisions, keeping the public up to date on major decisions, and especially those that affect rates and public participation. CPS must give a meaningful update on the Rate Advisory Committee now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Valias. Let's move to Carol Mendoza. And then following Ms. Mendoza will be Maria Ann Vargas, and she's our last speaker.
Thank you, Mayor, for handling the COVID situation so well. We're really proud of you. I support all the speakers that came before me, and I'd like-
Oh, ma'am, this is, could you identify yourself, just to be clear?
Yes, my name's Carol Mendoza.
All right, thank you.
I'm with the Climate Action Coalition, and there is a district in town, and also right here. I would like to encourage CPS to keep on being a leader and not to just ride their up-to-date success, because we are in a very changed environment, not only financially, but because of COVID and now the economy. I want to let the board know that Chesapeake Bay Energy filed for bankruptcy. They were one of the first energy companies to support fracking, and they are going out of business. That should be the canary in the coal mine. We've been hearing for at least a year that renewables are more financially responsible, and they are the wave of the future, at least a year. Now with Chesapeake Bay, who is one of the leading proponents of fracking and natural gas, declaring bankruptcy, I think it's a very great time for CPS to revisit their policies, enhance their solar and renewables programs, Step Bridge, FlexStep, what have you. I'd like to invite Microsoft to dialogue with the Climate Action Coalition. I'd like to invite CPS Energy to dialogue with Dr. Robert Bullard of Houston, who is reviving his Black Environmental Justice Network. He is known as the father of environmental justice, and I think he could really advise the Citizens Advisory Committee for CPS. He could advise the board on how to proceed and adjust that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mendoza. Let's move to our last speaker, Maria Ann Vargas.
The topic is the public customer needs to have the power to drive to change within the CPS Energy. Also, in order for CPS Energy to truly serve its community, it needs to include the public in its decision-making. It also needs to do, CPS Energy should be accountable to people, not to profit. There is a current lack of transparency with what is going on with the RAC, and now more than ever, it is necessary for CPS to have a real communication with the public and then give the public updates on the rate of the advisory committee or at least a timeline for when an update can be expected. Because as a customer, as a CPS customer, and I just recently lost my mother when there was an outage, and she was on hospice last year, I panicked. I thought I was going to lose my mother, but then you guys were able to fix it. But also, I want you guys to be able to let us know what's going on, because we are a part of you guys, and we are trying to get the community back in together. And that's the kind of topics that I would like for you guys to fix, and let us be involved, because we're also about community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vargas. And David, I think that concludes all the speakers for public comment.
That's correct.
All right, let's move on to Agenda Item 5, which is the CEO's Report. Our call on Ms. Pauline Gold Williams.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. I'm going to make my report fairly short personally today. We have quite a few things on the agenda, and I'll try to give a briefing of that information. We are going to get another update on our financials. We have actuals through April, and to trustee Dr. Mackey's request last month, we have a sheet in there that now shows what our comparisons were through that month. This said, we have done well. We are working very hard to control our costs and maintain our resources and make sure that our employees and the public are safe. We still have eight months of activity to go through, and we have the peak of the summer to go through as well. So Gary Gold will provide that update shortly. We will also get an update on Step Bridge. The board and the council were gracious enough to give us approval to continue the Step Bridge for the one-year bridge period from our very successful program that ended early and ahead of time and for less money than budgeted. That said, what we did is ask for the continuation of the funding, but we still need to have funding specified in our procurement so that the service providers that help us with programs like weatherization and other activities can be funded through the procurement process. So you will receive an update on that today. We also have an action where years ago, funds were donated and put into a trust called the Warm Fund. And for years, we've had both the REAP and the Warm Fund to help us provide additional assistance to customers in need. The Warm Fund, though, had, was specified to just make the contributions off of earnings. With interest rates being so low, there have been very few funds available through that source to provide assistance. We believe that this is an extreme time where we need to make sure that more funds are available to the public. So with the assistance of city staff, the mayor, and city council that made the approval last month, we're going to be able to convert the funds that were in the trust for Warm and convert them over to REAP. Today, we'll provide a presentation to the board, and we are looking for the board's concurrence of that program that the council has approved. You will also hear a presentation about the Citizens Advisory Committee. Councilwoman Sandoval from District 7 has requested that Dr. Aldalipa Kandtou be appointed to that position. I believe once we do that, we will have a full roster, so we're very excited about that. Back into the consent item, again, the primary item there is the activity so we can get the procurement approved relative to our weatherizations and other programs. And again, it relates to Step Bridge. You will hear today, the Green Tariff and the Resiliency Tariff. We continue to work with our customers who have great input about what we could do to provide additional products and services, and we'll have several of those presentations this year, and you'll hear today about those two. We'll have an update on the scenic with routing and siding process. This is a special one where the PUC actually controls the process, but we will be keeping the board updated about how we work with the community to find the right investments to make in that area of town. We are going to get an update, a big thing that we do all summer long. You got the update about operations, what we do to be ready for summer activity. Today, you'll hear from two areas, our Enterprise Information Technology Group and our Customer Engagement Group in Items 12 and 13. They're going to talk about the things that they do in terms of keeping the systems active and making sure that we have the right tools and that we're constantly looking at things that we can do better for our customers. That basically will be the content of the activity for this meeting, and afterwards, we will be having a PFC meeting. I do want to comment on a couple of things. I want to continue to indicate that the headquarters project, even with the COVID, the headquarters construction is still considered an essential service. We are managing that well. The team is staying on top of it, and we still believe that we are, will be on time and on budget with that process. And I do want to comment that Carolyn Schellman, our General Counsel, continues to work on the Rate Advisory Committee efforts. There are multiple people inside the company that are working on those activities, and we are making progress. I will end with, again, we continue to focus on COVID. It does take a tremendous amount of effort. I do want to highlight, in addition to the 29 cases that we have diagnosed just through last Friday, we have not gotten an update from today, our level of people who are in quarantine have gone up, or back up to 245 people as of last Friday. That is a very complex issue, because it does take people out of the workforce to keep them healthy and to make sure that they don't increase community spread. Those activities take a ton of time. We also have groups in our occupational health and our people in culture area that spend an inordinate amount of time testing temperatures and tracing activities if we have someone who's been exposed. So we continue to communicate, work with, and look for our practice and policies, again, to support our employees and to make sure that we are taking care of the public. So that concludes my primary report, sir.
Pauline Williams, we've got additional updates under Agenda Item 6. Do you want to introduce those, or should I just do it myself?
I think you can roll right through those, sir.
All right, so let's begin with Agenda Item 6A, Mr. Gary Gold on fiscal year 2021 COVID-19 financial. Mr. Gold?
Good afternoon, members of the board. Yes, I'm here to present our fiscal 2021 financial impact, and these are our results as of May 31st. Moving to page 5 of the package of material, just here, I will note, as Paula noted earlier, we are four months into our fiscal year with actual results. We still have eight months of projections built into the information that you will see here today. And so it's important to note that this information is preliminary and is still subject to change as we gather more information about the impacts of COVID-19. Moving to page 6, our objectives in big ways today are to review our financial results, look at our forecasts, as well as highlight our financial performance and look at our financial metrics. Moving to page 7, the items that I am going to cover today, we're going to take a look at our year-to-date net income. We will also have, we've added a new slide to this presentation, looking at information on our electric sales by customer segment. As we've had in the past, I have a slide on our net income forecast, as well as our flow of funds forecast and key financial metrics, and then we'll wrap up with actions and next steps. Moving to slide, or page 8 in your presentation, this is a look at our net income through May 2020, so our first four months of our fiscal year. For that period, our budget, I'll direct you to the bottom line, and our net income, we have projected in the budget a net loss of $20.6 million. Through the first four months, our actual results are actually a positive $20.9 million, for a variance of $41.5 million. If you look just slightly above the $41.5 million, I'll note for you that the primary drivers for that variance to our budget is a result of our cost savings activities, as Paula noted. We are seeing favorability in our operations and maintenance expense as we continue to look at where we have opportunities to delay projects, as well as the hiring freeze, the impact of the hiring freeze. And we are also seeing favorability in our interest in debt-related savings. And we are also seeing favorability in our interest and debt-related savings. I'll note for you that one of the items too in our interest and debt related that we did include this month, earlier in May, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board delayed some implementation eliminating the capitalization of interest. That, as a result of that, we are able now to continue to capitalize interest for our capital projects and that's provided some favorability in the result of lowering our interest costs as reported on our income statement. So that was a one-year delay by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. In fiscal year 2022, we're expecting that item to go back as GAAP ahead plan. Moving to page nine, this is a look at our electric sales by customer segment. And what we've done here is we've highlighted certain commercial and industrial segments as well as our residential. And as we've reported, what we're seeing overall is that our total system sales are down approximately 1.7%. But what we have seen since COVID-19 started, as previously mentioned, is the number of our commercial and industrial segments are coming in below budget. You can see that as noted here with the things, items we've noted, such as hotel and food services, educational services, manufacturing. But that has been partially offset by increases in our residential usage. So when you net all of these together, our sales for the month of May were 1.7% below budget, 1.7% below budget. I will note for you that our projections had that at 6.5% below budget, but we also saw some favorability during the month as a result of some warmer weather. So there was an increase in customer usage as a result of that warmer weather that provided some favorability. Moving to slide, page 10, this is a look at our net income projections for the full year. This includes four months' worth of actuals plus our projections for the final eight months of the year. Our assumptions for the remaining months of the year are unchanged from what we've previously presented to the board. And what we've effectively done in this material is only updated the results for the May actuals. If you look at the bottom of the second column, the net loss for the medium impact scenario, which is what I primarily focus on, we're reflecting in this forecast a net loss of a negative $38.3 million. That is an improvement from last month where our projection was a minus $54 million. And if you move to page 11, what I've provided here on page 11 are the primary changes in that net income number. The left-hand side of the bar, you can see the minus $54 million was our projection at the end of April, the minus $38 million to the far right is our projection here at the end of May. And the primary changes, as I noted, we saw some warmer weather during the month of May, so our retail revenue was slightly favorable. We also saw some slight improvement in our wholesale, net wholesale revenues. And then finally, I'll note for you that final green bar to the right, the positive $7 million in our debt-related expenses, this is where we booked the additional capitalized interest for the delay that GAAP had in terms of implementing their new guidance. Moving to page 12, this is a look at our flow of funds. Our assumptions here are similar to the assumptions for our net income. And again, this page only reflects, the real only change here is the change included May actuals. I'll note for you that in our total R&amp;R fund additions in that second column, the number at the bottom, right from the bottom, is $204.9 million. That number is improved from last month's number of $196 million, again, primarily due to the improvement in our retail revenues from the warm weather and the additional wholesale revenues. Moving to page 13, this is a look at our key financial metrics. Here, we're looking at our adjusted debt service coverage and our days cash on hand. The adjusted debt service coverage, our projection for the year under the medium impact scenario is a 1.5x coverage. That is up slightly from our projections at the end of April where we were projecting a 1.48x coverage. And our days cash on hand is slightly favorable at 165 days this month compared to 161 days cash on hand at the end of April. Moving to page 14, the final metric that I'll look at is our debt to capitalization. And again, here, slightly improved from last month. Our current projections for debt to capitalization are 60.5% under the medium impact scenario. And that's slightly improved from our projection of 60.7 that we had at the end of April. We're continuing to monitor all of these. Again, as I've noted in the past, management's looking at additional mitigations to improve our financial metrics. We're looking at additional cost savings where we can identify those and also continuing to analyze our revenues for the remainder of the year. So finally, moving to page 15, actions and next steps. As I noted, we're going to continue to monitor the COVID-19 landscape. Now that we've had two months of actual results and including also March results, we're starting to get a better understanding of the demand patterns and what is happening with our actual sales. And we'll continue to closely monitor those and build those into our financial forecast. We're also monitoring accounts receivable in our bad debt. Again, we are early in this as customers continue to work with us for assistance and we continue to look to provide them information on programs that can help them with their bills. We're going to continue to focus on cash flows. We're going to ensure that we have the liquidity for our operations. And as I noted, continue to look for additional cost reductions and cash savings, knowing that we need to be scanning for the organization for emerging risks as we continue to work to implement the safety measures to keep our employees and the community safe. And with that, I will share our key questions from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Gold. I would ask the trustees, any questions or comments?
Chairman Steen, this is trustee Kelly. I would like to compliment the finance team on the job they're doing to react to this COVID emergency that we have. And I was pleased to see that even under their worst-case or high-impact scenario, they're generating substantial cash flow for the company, number one. And number two, that they're funding not only the 6% growth revenue requirement R&amp;R, but they're also putting in additional funding. And of course, that R&amp;R number is probably the most important number on our P&amp;L statement. And so I want to compliment them on running an operation that even under this type of stress can do the full funding on the R&amp;R plus additional funding to it. So congratulations to the team.
Yeah, this is John Steen. I want to echo that and I'd ask for our CEO, what is your perspective on this?
I guess my, I would say our perspective is we understand what we need to do. We understand that we are doing the best we can to help our customers. But at the same time, we have a foundation of keeping financial stability. So the Financial Services Team is doing an excellent job of working with leaders across our organization to understand that where we can cut and defer, rethink, repaste, that effort is really in full swing. We have coupled the work that the Financial Services Group does with our project management team under Vivian Boulay and Mariso Awemis. And so we're doing a lot of work to integrate our planning, our budgeting, our resource constraints, be aware of that. And full circle, then Gary brings that back around with Corey Kuchinsky and we look at the risk that we take on in trying to make these decisions. So I applaud the entire senior chief team, all the teams and the management because, I mean, it's hard work right now and to keep an eye on everything we can and to keep our employees thinking about all of the things they have to do to stay safe. But that's the job, that's the job and that's what we're required to do. And I'm proud of everyone and I want to thank the board for your support in making sure that we stay balanced in all of our six pillars and that we keep everything stable.
And thank you, thank you. These are such a challenging time. Just thank you, Paula Gold Williams, for your leadership. Any other questions?
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Steen? Go ahead, Dr. Mackey.
Dr. Mackey, I'd like to say and compliment the leadership, Steve, because I always tell leaders that leaders prevail under a crisis and great leaders prevail under a crisis. And poor leaders are exposed in a crisis. So when I look at our leadership that we have and they prevail to victory in dominating and doing a great job in taking care of the company during these crises. So I want to compliment him on that too.
Well said, I agree with that. Any other questions or comments about the financial impacts? If not, let's move to Six B, which is Step Bridge Procurement Preview. Mr. Rick Luna?
Thank you, Chair Steen, and good afternoon, trustees. So I'm Rick Luna, I'm our interim Director of Technology and Product Innovation and I'll be providing a preview of an item that is on the consent agenda, which is a procurement item related to our Step Bridge program. And so my slides begin on PDF page number 17. Going to the next slide, page 18, my objectives and takeaways today. Again, I want to provide context on the procurement item that we have today on the consent agenda, share some information on the details of our contract funding request today, and then a little bit about the vendor partners who assist us with implementing these critical energy efficiency and weatherization programs. Going to slide 19, my agenda, I'll talk a little bit about the Step Bridge, talk about the customer programs that that enables, that support our customers, and then talk about the contract funding and how we deliver the programs, a little bit about the vendor partners who support us, and then I'll touch on the bill impact and give you an update on the impact of COVID-19 on our efficiency programs. Going to slide 20, just want to start by talking a little bit about the Step Bridge. You'll recall that back in January, we were before the board asking for your approval to implement a one-year Step Bridge program, which you approved. And we subsequently went to the city council and sought their approval, which we received unanimously, to continue our successful STEP program for another year. We, at that time, told you that we would be achieving the program a year early and we can now confirm that that in fact did happen. We just completed our measurement and verification process for the last year. And so the overall STEP program, we ended up achieving 849 megawatts against a goal of 771 megawatts. And our final cost for the entire program was $723 million, which was $126 million below the original projected cost of 849 million. So we're proud of that achievement. And so we are now in the Step Bridge year, which is indicated on the PDF page 20 there in the middle. So it's a one-year program. The city council authorized up to $70 million to be expended on that. And we committed to save 75 megawatts of additional demand through these programs. So that gave us the authority to continue the programs. In the meantime, we continue to gather and engage feedback from the community and we're gathering that and will subsequently be coming back to the board in the fall with a recommendation on the Flex STEP program, which we envision as the next-generation long-term plan for CPS Energy in our community. Moving to the next slide, just have here an overview of the programs that we continue to operate under STEP or the Step Bridge in this case. It's a diverse portfolio of programs and they're categorized there. Weatherization, which is a key program for our community. We have residential energy efficiency programs, commercial energy efficiency programs for businesses, our popular solar programs, including our solar rebates, and our demand response programs, which are so important in the summer for helping us to meet our peak demand. So we've got a variety of different programs. The ones I'll be speaking to today in our procurement item are the ones bounded by the dotted boxes. Those are the ones that we'll be speaking today and seeking your approval on a procurement item that allows us to continue to deliver those programs under the umbrella of the Step Bridge program. And so if we move to the next slide, so we're here today because we are seeking your approval to spend a portion of the $70 million that was previously approved with vendors who support us in implementing these programs. And those are indicated in the top section there, total weatherization and energy efficiency. I'll call your attention to the middle of the page, is the Step Bridge budget. And what that shows is how we have allocated the $70 million in this year's Step Bridge program by program. And so you'll see there a grouping, again, that says total weatherization and energy efficiency, which indicates $42 million. That's what we've allocated to continue those programs in this current fiscal year. And so what we're asking for today is the authority to spend $31 million of that $42 million. The reason only $31 million is that we actually have authority from, we were before the board last year in April and we have carryover dollars that have not been extended that we've been able to use so far this fiscal year. And so just the math there is $42 million, $11 million carryover, which results in a request there in the last column of the proposed additional funds of $31 million. Now, we understand those are big numbers. Just want to make sure that I provide you the context that these are turnkey programs that our vendor partners assist us with. And so they actually pay the rebates to customers and they also do the installation of equipment in customer homes. And so most of the dollars, about 80% of those funds, go direct to customers through our vendor partners. The other 20% represent fees that they charge and labor that they charge us for. So I'll go to the next slide, the PDF page 23. Just a little bit of information about who they are. And on the left-hand side, you'll see our residential energy efficiency and weatherization programs. Franklin Energy's logo is indicated there. They're the firm that we selected back in 2016 through a competitive process. And they have been, they established a local office and they operate these programs with our customers, really broaden our capacity to be able to work with customers, provide technical expertise, assistance, installation services, and so forth. And as you can see there, they have 30 direct jobs. These are folks working in the San Antonio office, providing these services to customers on our behalf. And in addition, 123 direct contractor jobs, which represent firms that implement weatherization services in customer homes on our behalf. On the right-hand side, you see ClearResult. They are the firm that we selected to do the commercial energy efficiency programs. They as well have a San Antonio office where they have 17 local direct jobs. I will note that the jobs that I've mentioned are pre-COVID and I'll talk a little bit about the impact to our programs from COVID. They're actually at a lower staffing level today as some of our programs have had to pause because they require us to be in the customer home and I'll come back to that in a minute. So in addition to the jobs I've already mentioned, I want to mention that these firms also manage for us a network of trade allies, which are, think about HVAC contractors, electricians, lighting companies that do work for customers in their home. So for example, if I replace my air conditioning unit, I may hire a contractor to come in and do that work for me. And then they facilitate the rebate process for us. And so there's 150 different trade allies that do that type of work through our programs. 40% of those are diverse businesses and 50% are local businesses. So, it's a large industry that has really blossomed because of these programs. Going to the next slide, PDF, page twenty-four. Of course, it's always important, and you've seen this slide before, we showed this back in January, of course, these programs do have a cost, and so, we always want to talk about the bill impact to our customers. Now, this is referencing the overall seventy million dollars that we got approved in January. It shows you that the bill impact from that is three dollars and forty-three cents per month for a typical customer with a thousand kilowatt-hours consumption. That works out to forty-one dollars a year. You'll see in the graph, the trajectory in the recent years has been downward, and we want to continue that, of course, through being very cost-effective in how we manage the programs, and really try to achieve as much reduction as low a cost as we can through a number of factors, including just being efficient in the management of our contracts and adjusting rebate levels as appropriate. So, going to slide twenty-five, just to touch on the COVID-19 impact, of course, as I mentioned earlier, a lot of times, we're in customer homes, for example, to do weatherization or to do audits on behalf of customers or businesses, or to install thermostat devices sometimes, we'll do that as well. Those in-home services, of course, are on pause in support of social distancing, but and we'll continue to watch the trend there. But that's not to say that the programs are closed, that we continue to accept applications for all of those programs, but in addition, there are still home improvements that customers are making, that may be replacing air conditioning units as we go into the summer, maybe adding insulation, or doing lighting changeouts, especially in businesses. And so, we accept rebates for that, we continue to process those, and actually to see good activity levels there. So, we are very much still actively pursuing efficiency savings, and typically, the summer is our busiest time, and so, we'll continue to closely monitor activity through the summer months. And so, with that, I'll go to my last slide, which is page twenty-six, and again, just in summary, we were asking for your approval in the consent agenda for up to thirty-one million dollars. That has already been approved, of course, in terms of the overall authority of Step Bridge, but want to ask for your direct approval on the thirty-one million dollars to be allocated to the vendors that I mentioned earlier, to support us in continuing to provide these critical services to our customers. Again, these are budgeted within the overall budget, and so, we ask for your support today. Thank you very much.
Before we, this is trustee Gonzalez, I have a question. Do we audit the work that these vendors do? Do we get, like, a customer satisfactory report? Do we audit the work randomly?
Yes, ma'am, we actually do several layers of that. Overall, the entire STEP program, we do an annual verification process where we verify that all of the savings that we claim is, in fact, you know, and so, they'll do ramble, you know, random field inspections, random documentation inspections, to verify that the savings have actually been generated. So, we do that at one level separately. Sorry, go ahead, ma'am.
Talking about the physical work, like, so the customer does their work, for example, like, the actual work done by contractors, subcontractors, in the homes of the people.
Yes, ma'am. We also have a quality assurance process, a Q&amp;A process for weatherization, where our folks, our staff, will be in the home afterwards to verify that the installation was done well. We also do customer surveys, and in our contracts with the delivery firms, they have a performance indicator that they have to meet. In fact, we hold back some of their funds until we can demonstrate that they have met those performance standards through a customer satisfaction survey as well.
Okay. Okay, that's important for me to know, and so, have they been favorable?
Yes, ma'am, they have, they have met their key performance indicators.
What is that? Is it fifty percent satisfaction? Is it ninety percent?
Ninety percent. We require ninety percent satisfaction.
Now, do you think that satisfaction has more to do that people are just grateful, and they accept whatever work is done, or is it because the work is actually great?
Well, I think, I think, one, I think the customers do like the program, I think you're right there, but customers are vocal if they are not, if something is not done to their satisfaction, and then we'll go back out and make sure that it's done to their satisfaction. So, anytime we get a negative comment, that is followed up on to ensure that we can resolve that issue to the customer satisfaction.
Any other questions or comments?
I do have, this is trustee Kelly. On your slide twenty-four, you show the average bill for a thousand kilowatt-hours a month. As that increases to two thousand, three thousand, four thousand, whatever, does that number go up in a linear fashion or in an accelerated fashion?
I'm sorry, this is Danny, I got disconnected, I was asking questions, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, you, go ahead.
We thought you were through asking questions, so.
No, no, I'm almost, there was a reason why I was asking this question.
Oh, trustee Kelly, would you yield a minute to ask?
Yeah, and I apologize.
Okay.
It's just that, I'm using my other phone, and I was getting another call, and somehow that call interrupted this call.
No, no, go ahead.
Okay, so, I'm definitely in favor of the program, so there's no questions about it. I was just curious about the quality of the work. I guess what happened, and this always happens by personal experience, right? So, I take care of my mother, that means also her house, and my mother was a recipient of the gas and revenue program, and so, by accident, I found out about some of the quality of the work, because I had to go in there and fix something. And so, I was just curious about how we measured the quality of work, because I ended up having to do extra work because of the work that had been done. So, that's why I was just curious about, and I found out accidentally, right? And again, I'm supportive of the program, I'm sure with any program that is at no cost to people, you're not going to get the quality that I would get if I'm paying for it a hundred percent, right? So, I was just curious about how we measure success, how we measure the quality of work, because I'm sure we get great reviews because people are grateful. I just want to make sure that we don't just, the vendors, I guess contractors, don't do the minimum, just at the expense of profitability, if that makes sense? I want to make sure that the quality of work is being done, because these individuals, most likely, as we all know, have a hard time maintaining their homes as they age, and the program is supposed to be, you know, helping out in many different ways, and I know that it does. But a lot of these individuals will never have another opportunity to upgrade their homes once the gas and revenue program happens once to them, and they're going to live in their homes for a long time still. So, that's why I was asking those questions, and how we, if we audited the work, if we actually looked at the work, if there were art specs, or those are the specs that Franklin and them decide in how they fix the home? But I was just, that's why I was asking those questions, but you do have my support for the additional funding.
Thank you, trustee, for the comments, and certainly, we, again, we have multiple layers to try to make sure that we have a satisfied customer at the end, because as you said, these are important improvements, and ultimately, we want them to be happy with that, and so, we can certainly look into that further to see what, where the issue was, but to your specific question, is that?
Yeah, maybe in the future, I would like, I mean, and again, I'm not there to micromanage or telling what to do with your job, but all I'm saying is that if I got something for free, I would say, I love it, without questioning it, because I'm grateful. So, I just want to make sure that we're mindful that even though we're getting favorable reviews, that we actually look at the work. I mean, when was the last time that we looked at the work and said, oh, these are great standards, and therefore, I believe the testimonial, if that makes sense? So, that would be my only comment. So, but again, you have my full support, I know that more so, under today's circumstances, people are going to look to the program, and so, I just want to make sure that the more we support this program, the more we move funds over, that we make sure that the quality of work is there.
Thank you for that, and I do want to mention one thing you asked about, if it's our standards, it is our standards that they work to, so, but we can follow up with more information, if you like, on the detail.
Yeah, no big deal, and then again, I just, I just found out by accident, but it's, you know, it's just something I learned, but in no way would it change my mind, I want to be clear for the record, that I would still be objective, I mean, not objective, but I would still be, yeah, objective, to support the program regardless of the personal experience, right? Because it is a great program, so I want to make sure I'm clear for the record.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Mr. Kelly, so, we'll go back to page, you were on page twenty-four.
Right.
On bill impact, and your question was related to that. Do you want to repeat it?
Yes, if, this is based upon the usage of a thousand kilowatt-hours a month. What happens if it's two thousand, three thousand, four thousand? Does that number go up in a linear fashion, or does it go up in some type of an accelerated fashion? For example, use the number of four dollars and thirty-nine cents that you see on there for a thousand kilowatts. So, if I use two thousand kilowatts, is mine going to be two times four thirty-nine? Is it going to be eight seventy-eight? Or if I use three times it, is it going to be, you know, twelve or thirteen dollars? Does that number go up in a linear fashion, or does it go up in an accelerated fashion that if I use three times that, I might pay four times the amount of money?
Trustee Kelly, thank you for the question. I guess that is in a linear fashion, and so, it's a, it basically represents a fixed factor, so the more that one uses, it scales linearly with that usage.
So, it is a linear increase from there, then, right?
Yes, sir. So, someone who, or it would be ten times, you know, the bill impact would be ten times more.
And it's the same for residential and commercial?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, that's across the board, then. The other thing I would say on the satisfaction survey, I'm surprised it's not a hundred percent, because that's looking at gift horse and mouth. If I'm given something free, pretty hard for me to complain about it, so, I find that ninety percent is probably a low bar for free giveaways, that, you know, if somebody calls, brings me a bicycle, I'm not going to complain about it, so, anyway, that's.
Well, my saving wasn't about complaining, my saving is, it still costs money, regardless whether the recipient doesn't pay a dime, the quality should be there, and you're right, it should be at a hundred percent, but it's not because people complain, maybe the work is not where it needs to be, so I would question the quality versus people complaining.
Yes, and if I can add a little to that, trustee Kelly, so, when we ask about customer satisfaction, of course, it's the entire process from application to completion, and so, there, so we're trying to understand the entire experience and to make sure that that was satisfactory to the customer. Okay, the other thing I would add is that even though it is technically free, I mean, at the same time, it's not, right? And that's what this graph is about, is I think customers feel like, you know, this is an important service to them, and so, they have an opinion on that, and so, we do, we do get challenged on that, and again, we try to follow up on every one, so that they are satisfied.
Seems like the satisfaction should be asked of the people that are paying for it, rather than the people that are receiving it. I paid for this every month, and I've never got a dime out of it, never expect to get a dime out of it, so, you know.
But didn't you do a survey, a customer survey, that they didn't realize they were paying for this, and they were happy to know about that not too long ago? If I'm not mistaken, we did a survey to customers about a couple, like, three, four months ago, and when customers found out they were contributing to this, they were happy about it.
There were.
I'd like to see that survey, I don't know that our customers have a clue that they're paying for this stuff.
No, they did, they were surveyed on it, unless we were misled, the survey said so.
Well, then, maybe we ought to put it out for a vote.
To the consumers.
We did get, we did get some survey results from people, and there were people who knew about the program, who knew that, you know, what it does, that we're happy, but there are other people who don't even realize it's on their bill, so we have to continue to work on that, but we'll pull the last survey information for the board.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, I'll bet you ninety percent of your customers don't have a clue what STEP means.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the Step Bridge procurement process?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Any others?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
All right. Mr. Luna, thank you for that presentation. Let's move on to Agenda Item Seven, Warm Fund Conversion to REAP, and that's Mr. Rudy Garza.
Yes, sir. Chairman Steen, trustees, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk to you today about what I think is a really good news story. My presentation on the Warm Fund Conversion to REAP will start on PDF, page thirty-two. The objectives today are to talk to you about the background on both the Warm and the REAP programs. Warm represents Winter Assistance for LEAP Mobilization, and the REAP program is the Residential Energy Assistance Partnership. We're going to talk about the need for additional funding and provide an update on staff recommendations. CPS Energy staff and the City of San Antonio staff have been working collaboratively on this, as Paula mentioned, with the city council approving this transition last Thursday at their meeting, and I will request your approval at the end of the presentation. If you join me on PDF, slide thirty-four, our agenda, again, we're going to talk about the background and the increase in need, spend a little bit of time on the sustainability of the REAP fund, and why we think this is an opportunity for our customers, and make a recommendation and discuss next steps with making a request for your approval. So, on PDF, slide thirty-five, the Warm project was established back in January of nineteen eighty-three, and its purpose was to provide temporary assistance to residential customers who are in need of utility assistance. The income qualification is similar to that of our REAP program, in that you must meet the income requirement of being at or below one hundred and twenty-five percent of federal poverty guidelines, and be in a state of financial hardship. On slide thirty-six, PDF, slide thirty-six, the way the Warm project was set up, really used the interest earnings from the corpus of the contribution that was made back in the eighties, back in the eighties, to fund the available dollars for, to provide assistance. Obviously, when you look back in nineteen eighty-five, interest rates were peaking at that time, and over the last twenty, you know, five years or so, we've seen those interest earnings now at very low levels, you know, with the economy being, you know, having been in a better condition than it was in the eighties. So, that's changed the picture of what the real opportunity is to provide assistance through the Warm Funds. If you move to slide thirty-seven, the original corpus was a donation in the amount of seven point five million dollars, and customers were able to apply for up to a hundred and fifty dollars of assistance one time per year. Now, applicants could receive both a REAP and Warm assistance in the same year, although both programs couldn't exceed a total assistance of four hundred dollars per year. So, they did work in collaboration with one another, with a total assistance limit, you know, being applied to that individual customer. If we move on to slide thirty-eight, the Residential Energy Assistance Partnership, or REAP program, is a partnership between CPS Energy, the City of San Antonio, and Barre County. Intake is done by our partners through the City of San Antonio and Barre County, and CPS Energy administers the program. We apply the available funding and provide internal reporting, so we really provide the administration responsibility of the REAP program with our partners doing the intake. If you move on to slide thirty-nine, we contribute at least a million dollars a year, and we also put on other programs, you know, such as our Grills Giving program that raises money for REAP on an annual basis. Uh, that is the, really, the, the basis for what's available to provide assistance. The, uh, income qualifications are the same as they are for Warm, uh, through the REAP program. Uh, and, uh, customers may apply for assistance through REAP two times a year. And again, that maximum of four hundred dollar, uh, combined annual assistance, uh, does apply. If you move on to slide forty, there is an increasing need in our community. Uh, you can see the, the, the gradual increase, uh, over the last couple of years. Uh, and certainly, uh, this year, we are on track to, uh, to continue, uh, to put pressure on the, on the needs through the REAP program. Uh, and so, you know, just the basis of, of the need in our community, uh, we are always looking for opportunities to increase the reach, uh, of, uh, REAP into the community to provide assistance. Uh, and this year, you know, with our COVID, uh, impact to our community, uh, you know, the need is as great as it's ever been, uh, with, uh, with, with our employees trying to help our customers manage through and, and connect them with assistance. Um, so that's really the story of how we got, uh, into this conversation about, uh, uh, bringing these two programs together uh, and, uh, and transitioning those, those Warm Funds over, uh, to the REAP program. If you look at slide, uh, draw me on slide forty-one, uh, we are, uh, are totally aligned, uh, with the City of San Antonio on this request. Uh, as I stated before, uh, the City of San Antonio City Council, uh, did approve this item, uh, at their meeting, uh, last Thursday. Uh, and, you know, when you look at the benefits, it really, uh, provides additional funding to address the increase in the need in our community. It streamlines the customer experience. So now they have one place to go, uh, to seek, uh, funding through, uh, the REAP, uh, uh, partnership. And, uh, finally, it streamlines administration and reporting, uh, for CPS Energy. So, uh, it's a win in terms of our ability, uh, to, to be more efficient. So on slide forty-two, um, um, management does respectfully request, uh, your approval to execute, uh, the required steps and activities to convert, uh, the Warm Funds to REAP. Uh, this will include the items, uh, the bulletted items, uh, uh, below the request. Uh, we will transfer the Warm Funds to REAP. Uh, we will terminate our current contract with the, uh, City of San Antonio, uh, for Warm. Uh, we will amend the REAP contract to reflect this transition. Uh, and then, uh, we look forward to fully administering, uh, the assistance program through REAP, uh, going forward. And that is my presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Garza. What are your questions or comments from the trustees?
The main one I have, again, this is trustee Kelly, is over on slide thirty-nine where it says we contribute at least one million dollars a year. That sounds pretty open-ended to me. Um, what kind of a cap? Now, after we're taking over this entire thing, this could be a bottomless pit. So how do we make sure that we do not, uh, get ourselves into a financial bind here with this?
Uh, this is trustee Gonzalez, and I would agree also with Mr. Kelly's comment. Like, we, I think we can't leave it open-ended.
Yes, sir.
So this is a, this is a, Paula, Rudy, I'll just join you a little bit here. The, this has been like this for, since, I don't know, twenty years. It's about a million dollars. We manage it in our base rates, and, um, usually there isn't, isn't much more that we have to do. But sometimes it's a matter of timing. So, and we are not taking on any additional administrative requirements than we had before. All we're doing is combining it so it's easier to administer, and it should actually be more efficient for us to do that. There are only seven point five million dollars of funds in there. We have, we have probably under five million in the, in the, um, REAP corpus. And all we're trying to do is re-c efficiencies. It is not a license to spend a lot more money. The only way really to get a lot more money from CPS Energy out of this is to put it as a part of a rate case, which we do not have in our plans to do. We are always assessing whether or not we need a rate case. And of course, we are under financial stress at this moment in time, but we also know that everyone is. So to have a substantially larger amount of money going into the REAP fund, we would come to the board and to the council to make that happen. We are not doing any major difference with this program.
Let me ask you another question. Our partners are COSA and Bear County. Are they putting in the same amount each year that we do?
No, sir. They, but they, but they have on, um, they have, the city in particular has put in money from time to time into this account. We also put ten, got ten million dollars inserted to this account as part of the NRG settlement. And we raise additional mon, uh, funds in the account. Uh, the county has other funds that actually help us with Y heat, which is a tremendous amount of a benefit. So there's different ways that people do it. They don't all put them inside of the REAP fund.
Well, I'd like to see us put some, uh, financial controls on this where we are in very dire times. Uh, and yet we are not a bottomless pit either. Um, and so I sympathize with people who have financial difficulties, but I don't want to transfer those to CPS. So I think we need to have some type, you said you can come back to the board. So, okay, let's put a million a year as our cap. And if you need more than that, come back to the board. But just to let this thing say at least a million, that doesn't tell me a thing.
Well, why don't we, if, if, if this is, um, I would thoroughly understand your request. Why don't we give you an analysis of where we've, what has gone into the fund, which we do have that, and we can share it? I will say the point that we are here today is to make sure that the seven point five million dollars gets moved over. That is what's really important. That helps mitigate any additional need in, in a year, to your point, where we don't really have extra resources. So the most important thing is to get that done, and then we can come forward and bring you an analysis of other years so that you can help us, uh, think through that, sir.
I don't have a problem in moving the money across. I just want to make sure we don't create a financial bog that we're wandering out into and don't have any idea where it leads us.
We will bring you an analysis and, and follow up on that action item. To the board.
I support, right, and I, and I support Mr. Kelly's desire to, to get an analysis. Because you never know, maybe our partners might be willing to contribute in some capacity down the line. I think it would be smart for us to, to continue to reach out to them and see if we can get some more buy-in and contribution. I'm sure with what we're experiencing and what will be with us for the next fifteen, eighteen months, there'll be some kind of funding that we might be able to attract to support the program and enhance it. So I will support Mr. Kelly's desire for an analysis as well as support the program.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Garza, you're looking for a motion. Would you state the motion that you, that you're looking for?
Yes, sir. Uh, we request your approval to execute the required steps and activities to convert the Warm Funds to REAP.
Uh, Mr. Steen, this is Carolyn. The, there is a resolution in the board book authorizing the conversion of Project Warm Funds to REAP. So I think what we need is a motion approving the resolution as presented to the board.
And, uh, the resolution is that, I, I don't have it right in front of me, but it's, it's about one page with a lot of recitals. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir. It's on page twenty-five of your, of your package.
Yeah, I, I, I would think, uh, why, why don't you go ahead and read that resolution?
Okay. It's a resolution authorizing the conversion of Project Warm Funds to REAP. Whereas on January thirteenth, nineteen eighty-three, Project Winter Assistance Relief Mobilization, Warm, was established by the City of San Antonio, COSA, to be funded by private donations and provide utility bill assistance to needy citizens. And whereas on December twenty-eighth, nineteen eighty-four, Wagner and Brown Partnership assigned to CPS Energy in overriding royalty interests herein after interest in certain natural gas reserves in Sterling and Crockett Counties with the request that the net proceeds of the interest be used to benefit Warm. Whereas on January thirty-one, nineteen eighty-five, COSA and CPS Energy entered into a memorandum of understanding providing that in order to perpetuate the availability of funds to Warm, excuse me, the net proceeds of the interest be maintained as corpus and invested for the benefit of Warm. And the income derived therefrom be used to provide assistance to needy citizens through Warm. And whereas Warm is jointly administered by CPS Energy and COSA, and whereas approximately seven point five millions currently comprises the Warm corpus. And approximately one hundred twenty thousand dollars of income is made available annually as assistance. And whereas the funds available for assistance through Warm each year have been limited to the income earned from the interest plus additional private donations received. And whereas the Residential Energy Assistance Program Partnership, Inc., REAP, was formed in two thousand and two by COSA, Bear County, and CPS Energy to help local economically disadvantaged families needing utility assistance. And whereas REAP is funded by an annual contribution from CPS Energy of one million dollars, private donations, and investment income, and provides direct utility bill credits to income qualifying CPS Energy customers living within the city limits in Bear County. And whereas given the substantially similar purpose and operations of Warm and REAP and the unprecedented effects of the coronavirus COVID-nineteen pandemic, particularly on the economically disadvantaged population, COSA and CPS Energy desire to streamline the provision of utility assistance credits to economically disadvantaged residents by utilizing the current Warm corpus, related interests, and any other funds received related to the Warm account, parentheses, royalty receipts, miscellaneous contributions, et cetera, parentheses, collectively Warm funds, for REAP purposes. And whereas on June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, COSA approved ordinance number, it's blank, we do not have it yet, authorizing actions including, one, the transfer of Warm Funds from CPS Energy to REAP, and two, the termination of Warm upon completion of pending administrative transactions and other related actions necessary for proper administration and management. Now therefore be it resolved, the CPS Energy Board of Trustees authorizes all actions necessary to convert Warm Funds to REAP now and in the future and terminate Warm for the purpose of achieving efficiencies through the administration of a single utility assistance program, optimizing the Warm Funds to address the increasing need in our community and streamlining our customers' experience by consolidating available funding under a single program.
Thank you, Ms. Shelman. Uh, do, does anyone, anyone care to, uh, to make that motion?
Uh, trustee Gonzalez, okay, go ahead.
Okay, I heard, I heard Dr. Mackey first, so Dr. Mackey.
Yeah, with Dr. Mackey first, yes.
And how about this, this, this.
I'll move it, we'll second it. Authorizing the conversion of Project Warm Funds to REAP.
Now we're taking that motion.
So we've got a motion by Dr. Mackey, seconded by trustee Gonzalez. Any further discussion?
No.
The, the modifications on the motion are only, uh, proposals presented by our CEO. How do we integrate that into this?
Chair, can I just take that as an action item since the real thing that we need to do is transfer the funds so we do not get the pressure of the extra ask for this year? And then we will take that as an action item to bring back to you what we've done for board input?
Okay, if you'll have a minute to reflect that, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Is that acceptable to you, Mr. Kelly?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any further discussion? If not, I'll ask, uh, Ms. Shelman to call the roll.
Chair Steen.
Aye.
Dr. Mackey.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mir Nerenberg.
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Chair?
Surpasses unanimously. Let's move to, thank you very much, Mr. Garza.
Thank you, great.
Great presentation. Let's move to item eight, appointment to the Citizens Advisory Committee, uh, Mr. John Leal.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. I will be starting on page forty-six of your booklet. Today we have, as Paula mentioned, an appointment on our Citizens Advisory Committee. And also, as Paula mentioned, this today will, uh, fill our committee with a total of fifteen members. If you move to page forty-seven, I'll review the existing membership, speak to the ongoing engagement of our CAC, and then at the end, talk specifically about the new candidate, Dr. Adelita Cantu, and request confirmation of her approval. If you go to next page, forty-eight, we have had several appointments in two thousand and twenty. And of course, today, we have a very specific ask from District Seven, Councilwoman Anna Sandoval. If you look at the chart on page forty-nine, here are each of the city council appointees. And if you notice, uh, highlighted in orange is a picture of Dr. Cantu, pending your approval, and of course, Councilwoman Sandoval. Now, each one of these members lives within the district that they represent. If you look at page fifty, you will see our at-large members. Currently, our executive committee is comprised of Chair David Walter, Chair-elect Luisa Caso, and Vice Chair Bill Day. Ongoing engagement on the next slide, page fifty-one. Depicted here, uh, is actually our last meeting with the CAC, and we transitioned over to WebEx. Uh, we first started off with a teleconference. Uh, they have been very agreeable about meeting virtually. And we continue to do the good work that the CAC does. As always, our agenda and meeting minutes are posted to our website. Despite the challenges, we continue to meet with this team. As you recall, on the next slide, you've had several CAC appointments in two thousand and twenty. Marielle and Belice is at large, Brandon Salis representing District Six, I'm sorry, District Four, and that is the picture that's depicted there. Raquel Zapata from District Six, and John Kelly from District Eight. As I mentioned, the appointment of the District Seven candidate will now complete the CAC. And if you turn to page fifty-three, Dr. Adelita Cantu, Associate Professor of Nursing, School of Nursing, UT Health, San Antonio. Board member of the National Association of Hispanic Nurses. And community involvement includes Alliance of Nurses for Healthy Environments and an officer in the Hispanic Latin Faculty Association, UT Health, San Antonio. On my last slide, this appointment has been made by Councilwoman Sandoval for Dr. Adelita Cantu to represent District Seven. And after your, any motion or action, I do have a prepared statement from Dr. Cantu who's listening via the web. I'll pause for any questions or comments.
Um, is, is, um, this is John Steen. Is, is Dr. Cantu, is she, is she with us now? Could she, um, could she interact with us now? Or are you going to read the statement? How does that work?
Uh, she is listening, but she is not on the call-in line.
All right. All right, what, uh, any questions or comments?
No, I, I'm again just happy that we have filled the vacancy. Um, and I hope that we continue to leverage the DAC board. I think they play a crucial part in transparency and representation from each district. And so, um, again, I applaud the effort to make sure that we stay focused and that they participate and, um, and that we fill the vacancy. Good work.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Uh, and we'll need a motion.
This is trustee Kelly. I think, uh, Dr. Cantu looks like an outstanding candidate for the CAC, number one. And number two, as I look at the slide that shows the various candidates and various, not candidate, but various appointees to the CAC, I think it is an outstanding committee. So I, uh, uh, hold ardently, uh, recommend for approval, Dr. Cantu.
All right, so, Ms. Kelly, we'll take that as a motion, and I think that's Dr. Mackey seconded in. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct. Any further discussion? If not, uh, uh, Ms. Shelman, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Dr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mayor Nuremberg.
Aye.
Chair Stein.
Aye.
There is, uh, it is unanimous, supportive of Dr. Cantu.
Great. Uh, Ms. Leal, we want to warmly welcome her to the CPS Energy family, and, and do you want to go ahead and read that statement?
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you, Chair Stein, and members of the Board of Trustees for the opportunity to serve on the CAC. I am grateful to Councilwoman Anna Sandoval for the opportunity to represent citizens of District 7. As a public health nurse, I know how important the environment is to our collective health and well-being. I look forward to working together with CPS Energy and give voice to citizens of District 7 on matters of CPS Energy, as well as ensuring stability of our environment for us and future generations. Mr. Chair, I appreciate the opportunity to share that statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leal. Let's move to the consent agenda, uh, which is, which is item nine on, on our agenda. It consists of, um, the minutes of a special board meeting held on May 20th, 2020, the minutes of the regular board meeting held on May 27th, 2020, uh, payment to the City of San Antonio for May 2020, and, and, and a procurement item, uh, related to professional services, which is, I believe, the one that we discussed earlier. So I, I'll need a motion on the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as posted.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey. Is there a second?
Second, Nuremberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask Ms. Shelman to call the roll.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Nuremberg?
Aye.
Chair Stein.
Aye.
There is, uh, it is unanimous, supportive of Dr. Cantu.
Thank you, Ms. Shelman. Let's move to, uh, a regular agenda item 10, uh, new products, green tariff, and resiliency service, and, um, this is going to be a presentation by, uh, Rudy Garza. Do you want to, do you want to take us into it?
Yes, sir.
As his sponsor, okay.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, and the reason I wanted to introduce this, uh, this item today is, uh, we are in constant communication with customers across our system, um, that all have their own goals and objectives for their business, uh, and we work real hard to try to find new innovative ways to provide products and services, uh, that enable them, uh, to, to, uh, to pursue those goals, uh, you know, within, uh, in partnership really with, uh, with CPS Energy. Uh, and this is one of those items, and, and really, Felicia Arthur is my predecessor, did a lot of hard work, uh, on, uh, getting these, uh, items, uh, to this point. It is my job to not mess it up and try to get it over the goal line, uh, so I did want to acknowledge the work that Felicia did, uh, on, uh, on, on these items. So if you join me on, uh, on the objectives and takeaway slide, uh, PDF, uh, page 85, uh, we're going to review our plan for providing, uh, product options and flexibility to our customers. Uh, these do align with community goals, uh, while ensuring that we're, we're maintaining our financial responsibility, uh, to the community. Um, we're going to give you an overview of the proposed, uh, new service offerings in the green tariff and the resiliency tariff, and we will ask for board approval today if, uh, if, uh, you know, if you're ready to do that. Uh, on slide 86, uh, our agenda is, we're going to talk a little bit about, you know, what tariffs represent, uh, for CPS Energy's business. Uh, we're going to align, uh, this item with our, uh, with an overall roadmap of, uh, what's ahead of us, uh, with respect to new products and service offerings. Uh, we're going to give you an overview of both the green tariff and the resiliency service tariff. Uh, Melissa will talk to you today about, uh, our marketing and outreach to our customers who might be interested in these new products, and again, we are going to request your approval. Uh, and I will turn it over on slide 87 to Chad Hoopengardner, uh, who will walk you through the next few slides.
Thank you, Rudy. Good afternoon, trustees. Um, as Rudy mentioned, my name is Chad Hoopengardner. Uh, I have the privilege of leading our strategic pricing team here at CPS Energy, uh, and I have with me today my colleague Melissa Cerola, uh, who is, uh, the interim Senior Director of Corporate Communications and Marketing. Uh, she and I are very excited to be here with you today, uh, to talk about new products, and specifically, two that we'll ask your approval for, the green tariff and the resiliency service tariff. Um, but before we go into the content, on page 87, I want to give you a, a quick definition of a tariff, because I will use that word a lot today. A tariff is very simply a, a pricing structure, uh, that a utility uses to assess fees to customers. Um, it's approved by a regulatory body, uh, and we at CPS Energy have dozens of them. Um, they are the prices that we charge our customers to support, uh, the services that, that we deliver to them. Um, here in 2020, uh, we are going to be bringing forward a number of tariffs for your consideration and hopefully approval. Uh, it's a, it's a part of a, a series of presentations, uh, that we are going to, to provide that, um, deliver new products that are intended to, um, keep up with, uh, current trends and, and meet customer needs. If you'll turn to page 88, this is our product roadmap. Uh, Rudy mentioned that we're going to share with you our plan for providing options and flexibility to customers. Uh, this is that plan. Um, it aligns very much with our guiding pillars. In fact, you can see going down the left-hand side, three of our guiding pillars, environmental responsibility, resiliency, and reliability. And growing across the top is, is time, we're here today to talk about two items, the green tariff and resiliency service tariff. These are, uh, new options for our large commercial customers, but we will be back in the balance of this year to talk about a number of other offers that we would like your approval on as well. Now, I want to point out that while the items we're discussing with you today are for our large commercial customers, we do have a number of very strong programs for our residential customers as well, and I want to highlight those. Turning to page 89, we have a very successful residential solar program. We have close to 21,000 customers that are participants, um, solar installations. Uh, in total, it's almost 180 megawatts of distributed solar capacity, and the program is, is supported very well by STEP and NOW Step Bridge. Um, our resiliency tariff will also support energy storage, which supports solar as well. Now, these are, uh, the residential side, it's very strong, we've had a lot of success with it. We will always look for opportunities to improve on and optimize those programs, but at this point, we also want to build on that success by, uh, launching, uh, commercial programs, um, for distributed solar. Turning to page 90, we'll get into some of the details behind these two specific products that we're going to recommend today. Um, they are aligned with our guiding pillars, uh, and these specifically are designed and developed to meet the requests that we've been getting from our customers. With the green tariff, we have found that some of our largest commercial customers want to accelerate, uh, the access that they have to renewable energy. So we've developed a tariff that offers the option to these customers to designate a very specific renewable energy source for their energy needs. For the resiliency tariff, our customers, our medium and large commercial customers, have communicated to us that they are looking for more reliability from the energy that we are providing, and so we've developed a proposed tariff that offers the assurance of uninterrupted power to meet their needs. And we believe both of these products have a significant amount of community value, and turning to page 91, um, both the green tariff and the resiliency service tariff enable commercial customers to meet their climate goals, uh, they promote resiliency of our electric infrastructure, and we believe they align with community objectives. But the way we've developed these products from a pricing point of view, um, we have ensured that we are protecting the community's investment in electric infrastructure by ensuring that the cost of these assets is fully covered in the prices that we offer them. Okay, so that's sort of the overview of the two products, but I'd like to dive into a little more detail around the green tariff first, and then the resiliency service, uh, in a few slides. If you'll turn with me to page 92, our green tariff, the proposed green tariff, just like all of our large commercial rates, uh, it has three pieces. It has a flat monthly fee, a grid share, it has demand charges, and it has energy charges. Now, those first two pieces are intended to recover the fixed costs of providing this service to customers. The third piece, on our standard commercial tariff, it recovers the average cost of generating a kilowatt hour from our diverse fleet of generation assets. For the green tariff, those energy charges would be defined by what we're calling a RESA, a Renewable Energy Supply Agreement. Now, the RESA is a separate contract that, that couples with the green tariff, and the contract is between the customer and CPS Energy, and that's really where the flexibility and, and the magic happens for the green tariff. It allows us to partner with customers to evaluate their energy needs, and then help them select a renewable energy source that meets their needs. It could be a wind farm in North Texas, or a solar farm in West Texas, or some other renewable asset that they have their eyes on. And that contract will define the price that they'll pay for the energy charges. So the green tariff and the RESA work together to determine the full bill amount, and ensure that we're fully recovering our cost of providing this service to customers. Now, if you'll turn to page 93, I want to elaborate on that point a little bit. We've done a revenue comparison between our standard commercial rates and the green tariff, and ensured that we would see the same revenue if a customer migrated from our standard rates to the green tariff. Uh, but while we designed this, we took the opportunity to, what I call, purify the rate. In other words, design it so that fixed costs and fixed recovery, um, are better aligned. And that's what the chart on this page represents. If you look at the left bar, our costs of serving these large commercial customers, a little less than half of those costs are, are fixed costs, and the other portion is, is the variable cost of generating a kilowatt hours that they consume. Our current rates, however, uh, the middle bar, a little less than a third of the revenue is from fixed components on the bill. And that creates risk, because if there's, um, a change in the volume of kilowatt hours they, they purchase from us, uh, there's risk that we may not cover our full fixed costs. So in the green tariff, we have addressed that. We have created the rate in a way that we expect 45-ish, 44, 45% of the revenue will come from the fixed components of the bill, those two pieces I mentioned on the, a couple of slides ago, the, the fixed charges, the demand charge, and the grid share fee. Um, and the rest will come from the variable charges defined in the RESA. Um, and at the end of all of this, uh, we believe the revenue will be the same, and city payment will be the same to our owner. The last item on green tariff that I want to talk briefly about is sort of a housekeeping issue on page 94. Today, our largest commercial customers on our standard commercial rate, our large commercial rate, have the ability to submit an application to the City of San Antonio for economic incentives, um, in the way of a temporary discount on their bill, um, by partnering with our community. Uh, we want to preserve this level of economic incentive access, uh, so that tomorrow, after, uh, hopefully, the green tariff is approved, large commercial customers on either our large commercial rates, standard rates, or the green tariff can make that same application. At this time, we're not recommending a change in the requirements that must be met to actually get an incentive, nor are we recommending a change in the level of incentive. We'll continue to partner with the City of San Antonio on that, but at this point, we're not recommending any changes. Okay, that's the green tariff. Uh, I'd like to talk for a couple of minutes about the resiliency service. So if you'll turn to page 95 of your pack, um, we'll, we'll get into the resiliency service. We have found that, uh, many of our medium and large commercial customers are looking for solutions for dependable power even when there are critical weather events, like high winds, or snowstorms, or flooding, and we've developed a product that, for a monthly fee, will provide access to onsite generation assets. Uh, we actually launched a pilot program, uh, for resiliency service about a year ago. It's been very successful, and we're ready to finalize it so that it has broader customer appeal and use. In fact, during the storms over Memorial Day weekend, and I'm sure you all remember, um, the resiliency service pilot, uh, performed very, very well. We had, uh, about three or four customer locations that, without this onsite generation, they would have experienced up to three hours worth of outage. Instead, they saw 15 to 30 seconds worth of downtime while their onsite generators powered up and kicked on, and these customers were able to continue offering their services to the community in a really critical time. So how did we make this work? Uh, on page 96, there's just a, a simple diagram that sort of lays it out. We've partnered with a third-party solution provider, um, and this third party actually builds and owns and maintains backup generators, natural gas backup generators, at the customer's site. CPS Energy is responsible for building and owning, and we maintain, the facilities to interconnect those natural gas generators to our natural gas infrastructure and our electric infrastructure, and we recover the cost of those facilities through this monthly resiliency service fee. And of course, the customer pays the monthly service, uh, resiliency service fee, uh, and in exchange for that, uh, they, they get to experience no or very minimal disruption in service. Um, so very straightforward, but both are very exciting products, uh, and I actually want to transition to my colleague Melissa, um, to talk about our marketing plans and our customer outreach plans. Melissa?
Thank you, Chad, and good afternoon, Board of Trustees. I'm excited to be here today. As both Rudy and Chad have mentioned, these are products and services that are, we know our customers are, have asked for, and that's where our team comes in to create awareness for these offerings. We are in the process of branding these services. Uh, we know that sustainability and resiliency options are important to our customers, and our team is working on the strategic development of messaging and marketing information to communicate the benefits of these products. As, as you've saw in some of these slides, it is, it is very technical, and we want to make this as user-friendly and as customer-friendly as possible. And part of that process is working with our key accounts team to get to know our customers and, uh, the, the, to highlight, um, that what they would like to see in these products. And we'll continue to work with them to set our goals, um, and continue that outreach to commercial industrial, um, customers. We also know that engagement is going to be a key part of this, and in working with the San Antonio Economic Development Foundation, uh, the San Antonio Economic Development Department, with the city, and the county's Economic and Community Development Department, we will work with them, uh, to, to partner and highlight these offerings for not only new customers in San Antonio, but actually new businesses that could possibly come to San Antonio as well. I look forward to coming back to you with more of an, of an update, and, uh, with that, I will turn it back to Chad.
Thank you, Melissa. Trustees, I'd like to reiterate a, a couple of key points that, that we've made this afternoon on new products on page 98. We are committed to providing product options and flexibility to our customers in an effort to, to meet customer needs and customer requests. We believe that the new products align very well with community goals, uh, and we've designed them in a way that ensures financial responsibility, uh, by fully recovering our cost of serving these customers. The proposed tariffs, uh, support and align very well with our guiding pillars. Um, and so, because all of that, uh, works very well together, um, at this point, I'd like to transition, uh, to page 99 and, and seek approval. So we, we do respectfully request our, our Board of Trustees' approval on both the green tariff and the resiliency service tariff. That is the end of my presentation, but I'd be happy to, to take any questions that, that you may have.
Thank you very much. What are your questions or comments?
Chair, this is, uh, Mayor Nuremberg. I just, uh, I just wanted to compliment the staff on their persistent pursuit of this tariff. I know it's been, um, um, a long time coming, but I'm very pleased to see, uh, where we are today. Thanks for your efforts.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I've got several, um, Mr. Chairman. I'm fairly close to most major businesses in San Antonio, and none of them have talked to me about this. Um, so you said that it has been at the request of some of the major companies. Can you tell me who- and none of them have talked to me about this. So, you said that it has been at the request of some of the major companies. Can you tell me who some of the major companies are?
Well, as you heard during our public comment period, Microsoft is one of them. They are not the only large commercial customer. We have essentially most of our large commercial customers that are large energy users, they're very efficient. These types of solutions work very well for them. I want to keep their names specifically confidential, but we did design these products to meet the needs of many customers, many similarly situated customers. And we think once Melissa is able to get the marketing and customer outreach plans fully churning and fully going, we'll be hearing from even more customers.
So, in effect, we're pushing it through the system. We're not pulling it through the system because companies are asking this too.
I would say it's both. Mr. Kelly?
Okay, next question. This sounds pretty arcane to me. And so, I can't vote on something like this because it seems like a major, major policy decision and this is the first I've ever heard of it. So, I would want to see a huge amount of additional information. Number one, what kind of unintended consequences could this cause in terms of rate shifting, et cetera, et cetera? I'd like to see some scenario analysis on that. What kind of cascading effect can it have on energy costs to different customer classes going through this? What kind of effect can it have on our total demand at CPS Energy going forward? I need a huge amount of information. I would like to hear, I mean, it may be a great program. I don't know. But I, at least from my perspective, I can't vote on a program of this magnitude when all I know about it is a couple of slides I've read and a board presentation and a fifteen-minute discussion. To me, this thing, I would want to hear a specific report from the San Antonio Economic Development Foundation. I would want to hear a discussion from companies such as Toyota, USAA, Valero and others. I would want to also hear from mid-sized companies that may not be wired into this either. So, from my perspective, it may be the greatest thing since sliced bread, but I know nothing about it. So, I've got to have a whole lot more information before I could ever vote on it.
Sure, this is the CEO. It probably doesn't, what we need to do is do a lot more connection because we have in fact been working on this for quite some time, probably a couple of years. And the way we've done it is we provided the board updates. Now, I wouldn't say periodically, but several times a year of the different discussions and things that we had. So, what we need to do is provide you some additional connections so you can see this. It really isn't new. I would tell you, just as you all deliberate, what happens is we prepare our rates to recover costs. That is the most important thing. So, just like Steph actually has a charge on the bill, as you well know, and that gets approved by ordinance. It gets approved by the board and it ultimately gets approved by council. But that way, we recover our cost and we do it through what we call the fifth fuel and we make sure that that works. What we've done with this rate that is focused on recovering all of the fixed costs is restructure. So, in many ways, it's probably one of the most progressive rate designs that we have. Every other rate that we have is volumetric, which means you have to have an increase in the number of megawatts to cover your fixed costs, which really drives more risk in the rate recovery. In this case, the way we've done it is we actually are in a better shape than we've been before. And so, the feedback that we've gotten from customers, multiple ones, is they want more products and they want more services. We've had a solar tariff rate for residents for many years, but we have not been able to answer some of the questions and requests that have come from larger employers that have the resources to put these systems on their buildings and in their parking lots and on their land. They are working on resilient products in the background for backup storage. And you see this as a national trend, but it very much, what we've been able to do probably better than most is redesign the rates to make sure that CPS Energy has done something in balance and is progressive. So, we do owe you the ability to show you those connections. I would tell you, there have been multiple verbal and written updates and it's just been a while because of COVID. You know, we're sharing it with you now. But what Chad has shown you back on page ninety-three is probably one of the most important things that we've done where we are now covering rates with fixed costs instead of leaving them exposed. So, it is a really good, really good item and I would just offer you that. And I think I heard Trustee Gonzalez start to ask and then Sir, Trustee Kelly, do you have anything else? We'll be glad to talk about that.
Yeah, my only comment was that this is a new, we've had several discussions and this has been a very complicated discussion and a very important discussion and a program that really supports a lot of the initiatives that we're trying to accomplish. But I would disagree that this is the first time we've been briefed. I do agree that there was a break-in between. It's been long, but I mean, it's been a very complicated discussion and negotiation, so I would not delay a vote on this. That would just be my opinion.
What other questions or comments?
I would like to see an independent third-party review of this with various scenario analysis showing me what could happen. I'm afraid of unintended consequences. It sounded great, but I've been a part of too many situations in the past where you do a quick survey over the top, everybody cheers and then two years later you find you made a fatal mistake. This is a big issue and so let's give it a big look.
Is it a big issue because of the big companies you know that it favors or is it a big issue because it affects the communities, my question?
It affects the company is what makes it a big issue.
I think that if we don't support it, it has a direct impact that it opens competition in a way that would hurt our balance sheet. And so, it's something that, again, I think that we've had plenty of discussions. I'm not against making sure you have information, making sure that, you know, you get reacquainted with the information, but I'm definitely against a big third-party analysis.
If it's gone through the board, it went through pretty quick.
Again, I'm going to disagree with this. This was a very long process.
So, it needs a very long analysis and that starts right now.
There's several of us on the board. I think that requires a vote, not just one person or me speaking.
Right. So, it sounds like, Mr. Kelly, and I don't want to, you know, I don't want to speak for you, but it sounds like that if we went forward with a vote today, am I correct, how your thought would be to vote against it because you don't have enough information? Is that a fair characterization?
Exactly. I don't vote on major policy issues that I don't totally understand.
So, then I would ask Paula Gold Williams to just speak to, I'm just throwing this out, speak to delaying it a month to see if we could get, would that be realistic?
Why not put it to a vote?
Well, no, we can certainly put it to a vote. I'm just asking, just exploring this. But Ms. Gold Williams, if we waited a month, would that be enough time to, well, speak to the delay? And then also, would that be enough time to get Mr. Kelly what he needs?
Yes, sir, I'll do my best.
And I want you to talk, Ms. Gonzalez, no, we can certainly vote today. I'm just trying to explore this, but if we...
Well, I mean, here's my thing. If we vote and it doesn't, and if it doesn't pass, you know, we can revisit as a board. I just believe, again, that I don't agree with that we were not told what was going on and what the importance of this was. I agree with the major policy, but I also, again, stress that we were kept abreast. I mean, this was not an issue we took lightly. This was something that we spoke in great detail. So, I'm just surprised. Maybe I was at the wrong meeting, but I'm surprised.
It was not discussed in great detail, I can promise you or else I would have remembered it may have been discussed. Who on this board is willing to put their hand on a Bible and say they totally understand this issue?
Well, you know, a question that comes to my mind perhaps, was it discussed at the committee level? Could somebody speak to that? In other words, for the operations committee, for example, where Trustee Gonzalez...
We discussed it.
I'm not on the operations committee.
No, no, that's why I'm trying to figure out, Mr. Kelly.
No, 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 no. It was not at the committee level. We've had issues around trying to figure out some of the more complex issues with our generation and how were we going to cover our costs. And so, relative to the design and implications of that, I've been able to have periodic conversations with the board from that perspective. Probably have even been able to update the council a bit, particularly about this fixed cost issue that we have struggled with for a very long time and it's actually something we'll have to go back and try to do the same thing at some point on all of the rate design. But yes, we've talked about this. We've talked about just multiple dynamics in trying to get the rate designed correctly. We've done a lot of studies of other rates across the nation. We've given a lot of our updates in writing to the board and just general updates associated with why we are having these discussions, how do we work through those? So, it probably, I will say, it wasn't always clear that, I think, management staff part, that we were working to a new tariff. So, we would always talk about the discussions about trying to design it and probably didn't have a timeline out there for the board, but we have been working on this for a couple of years now. Relative to the request that Trustee Kelly has put in front of us, I am trying to understand the extent of what you're asking. I think it may be difficult to get a third-party engage and get that done in thirty days, but we can do that. We can try our best and let you know what we can come up with. But the point, I guess, one thing to acknowledge is as much as we are challenged, the thing I talk about to the board all the time is that the industry is changing. The expectation of customers are changing. And what we try to do at CPS Energy is come up with an objective way of figuring out how to make steps forward. And there is always risk in the business model because of innovation. If things change a lot and we cannot foresee how innovation changes or we can't see the difference in customer preferences or we can't offer, to Trustee Gonzalez's point, if we can't offer a product that a customer can get in a non-municipal market, then we have other challenges and risks. But that's not the business that we are. That's not the municipal entity that we are. We try our best to come up with rational ways of trying to make proposals that correlate with what we see as industry trends, both in the nation and across the globe. So, even our current rate structure has risk in it. Right now, because the rates are all designed volumetrically, if something was to change in the demand for energy, we would be at risk. And so, the questions that you asked rightly show, Trustee Kelly, they exist to a great degree in different ways today. We can do our best to try to give you some additional data and show you the links and, you know, again, tell all the board members more. It is complicated. I won't disagree with you. I don't know many things that we're doing that isn't getting like this, more and more dimensional and complicated. We're trying our best to bring you things where we've thought about balancing all those things, the six pillars, reliability, financial stability. But I'm really not positive, but we can definitely try in the next thirty days to get you more of the information that you're asking for, of the entire board.
But my question to you is, what's the significance of, is it a big deal to wait thirty days?
Well, I mean, I think we have, I mean, we have customers that, I mean, Microsoft, which commented, is definitely asking, but there are other customers as Chad had mentioned. They have mentioned it and they are looking for it. But I think, you know, I mean, they're hearing the conversation outlet and we can explain to them what you're asking and we can see what we can do for the July board meeting.
Well, I'm just, we've got a, you know, one of our trustees has expressed concern that he doesn't have enough information on it. So, my thought is that if we really bore down, could we get that information and answer all of his questions? You know, and take this up again at the July meeting.
We can do our best and bring you what we can find.
Ms. Gonzalez, are you pretty insistent that we vote on it today or what's your thought?
I mean, I was going to ask you to ask Dr. Mackey. He's been pretty quiet with his thoughts. I mean, I'm all for respect for all trustees to, you know, provide information, but I'm at an agreement of a third-party analysis. I think that, again, CPS has worked really hard on it. We have feedback from clients such as Microsoft and others. I think, you know, I'm in support of definitely making sure that all our fellow board members are refreshed and reminded what this request was about. But I, again, I'll be very frank. I'm not going to support a third-party analysis and delaying this another year after we've worked on it so hard.
Sounds like a Microsoft decision.
My thought is that we delay it, we definitely take it up in July, that we delay it for thirty days and that management just does the best job they can to really jump on this and get Mr. Kelly all the information that he needs. I think we can't have a full-blown third-party and whatever, but we can do something. I think that's what I hear the CEO saying, so.
Yes, sir, and yes, ma'am, we can. We can go ahead, sir.
I recall us discussing this twice. And if you, for asking me the information, have we ever discussed this? Yes. But both discussions were done in closed session and mainly it was done by one company and it was talked about. And this information talked about the tariffs and things that we can do and it was explained that we'd have to do it for all. If we do for one, we'd have to do it for all. I was proud of that, fully supporting that. And so, it, what the board, what the CEO is presenting today, that she has my full support on this right here.
It sounds like a Microsoft decision to me that, I know we've been getting a lot of pressure from them to bend our business model to their demands and that's fine, but let's hear from Valero. Let's hear from USAA. Let's hear from Toyota. Let's hear from other major companies. Let's assume this works and it affects two percent of our demand. Let's assume that it affects ten percent of our demand. Let's assume that it affects twenty-five percent of... Let's assume that it affects ten percent of our demand. Let's assume that it affects twenty-five percent of our demand. Let's see what that does to a cascading effect on our revenues, uh, and the success of the company. That's the type of stuff I'm talking about. This is unintended stuff that you have no idea what's gonna happen going forward. So run me some, some scenario analysis, number one. Number two, show me in the board meetings where we discuss specifically these issues. Let me see the board minutes and let's quit beating around the bush. If you guys have to have this thing, get after it. Go for it. All I'm one vote, but I'm gonna vote against it because I don't think it's been thought through, period.
Uh, and it wasn't just Microsoft. Everybody's speaking as well, for the record.
I have not heard from one company on this.
Oh, Lord.
Uh, well, one thing I'm a little bit concerned about is that, that, uh, some of these things we've talked about in the executive session and I, I, you know, you're, Carolyn Schellman, you'll have to speak up if, if maybe we're talking about some things that we should be talking about in executive session.
All in generalities, all in generalities. This is not generality here. This is specific policy. And when you shift from generalities to specifics, then you need very detailed information. I don't have it.
Well, a- a- again, what I'm trying to do is, 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 is pay attention to one of our trustees who, who wants additional information. I agree that we shouldn't wait, uh, wait a year or even, even two months. But would, would it be acceptable to allow a one, one-month delay and really, uh, try to get, and, 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 you know, Mr. Kelly, you may get all this information and still be against it, but I would feel better about it if, if you were allowed to, to delve into it, uh, as deeply as you wanted to in thirty days.
So if I understand correctly, it would be one no, two yes, and then we haven't heard from the mayor and we don't know where you stand, John. Is that correct?
Well, Ms. Gonzalez, I'm, I'm just trying to accommodate a trustee who seems very concerned about this issue. That, that, that's where I am on this.
No, and I understand and I respect Mr. Chairman and I respect Mr. Kelly's, um, information. I just, I don't, again, for the record, won't agree that we're not informed, that we don't understand the complexity and that we don't understand what that state, and, but, but, again, I'm gonna stress those things.
And, and by the way, um, I, I'm just trying to, uh, uh, you know, play a, a certain role in all of this. Uh, but anybody's, uh, it's on the agenda. If anybody would like to make a motion in a second, it can, it can certainly proceed forward. I, I was just trying to accommodate Mrs. Kelly's concerns.
Management will gladly, I mean, I, I assumed the mayor might still be on and may want to make a comment. But I think a thirty-day, uh, if you would give us some time to get some more information and contact, I mean, we would gladly do the work to help all the board members and, and, you know, let's see if there's anything we could do, uh, better. And, um, then that, at least that way, there would be some time for any other board member who has additional questions to, to ask us to, to focus on that. We'd be glad to do that, to help the board.
You know, it's been, and I'll, I'll compliment Mr. Kelly. It's been my experience. He's been such a valuable trustee that he really delves into some of these issues. And, and, and Paula, you'll, you'll acknowledge this, that there have been times when, when Mr. Kelly initially has raised questions about things, but we've, we've been able to get him a lot of information, which he's looked through and, and at times he's come, he's, 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 uh, he's, he's, he's been favorable in the end, but he just didn't have enough information initially.
Mr. Chair, I could make some, uh, motion to move that we put on the agenda, vote on it and, and see what happens.
So Dr. Mackey, your motion is to, is to what?
To approve the scenic, uh, loop routing and-
No, no, but, wait, 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 before we make my mo- that motion, my, my question would be, what committee is gonna get this information? Is it all of us or is it just gonna be exclusively the executive committee?
Oh, no.
Here we go, and-
No, no, we give it to all, all the board members. Again, our big issue is to make sure that our generation, the strategy around the generation has to be the primary focus. And as you can see, again, it's hard to, it's hard to emphasize, but Slide 10 is extremely important in our commitment and we have to, we would proof that up and give that to the entire board.
Oh, Ms. Gonzalez, we're, we're focused on, we're, we're focused on Ed Kelly because he's been asking the questions. But no, I think that, I think, uh, uh, of course, um, you can, uh, you can request whatever information that you want and, 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 uh, and delve as deeply into it as you want to and any of the other trustees.
I don't think any discussion, any information should be all of us collectively and not just one person if we're gonna provide the courtesy of thirty days.
Sure. I mean, if I'm understanding that correctly, we're not gonna meet to talk about it, but yes, you would have, uh, the opportu- every opportunity to get as much information as, as you needed.
Um, no, I would say it was such an important policy that we should actually all discuss it, whether it's a live conversation again, uh, a meeting. I wouldn't say individual conversation, because it's really hard to get a full picture if it's just a one-on-one conversation.
Well, another way to think of it is that, uh, we could go through that process within thirty days and, and we'll be right back where we are now, which is discussing a motion. And that would be an opportunity for all of us to discuss it together.
Chairman, this is, uh, Mayor Nuremberg. I had to shuffle away, uh, but I'm, I'm stepping back in time to, to find out there's some, uh, headwinds on this green tariff. I'll just, I'll just say, if, if I can-
Sure.
-to ask you.
Yes, sir.
Um, this has been a, a, an evolving process, I, I would say, for at least two years with regard to how we are going to recoup, um, fixed asset costs that we've tied up in assets and in deals that have lasted twenty, thirty-plus years. Meanwhile, we're seeing an evolution of two things. One is an increasing desire on our customers' behalf, as well as our public, to move to greener, uh, renewable sources of fuel. The second being that we have an increasing number of large-volume customers who wanna control their own assets. And so the CPS staff has been working very hard, uh, keeping council informed and, and, and to my knowledge, although I wear two hats here, that the board as well, keeping us informed about the difficulty and making sure we can do this in a way that doesn't benefit just one customer or one customer class. Uh, this has been very difficult. I understand, which is why I opened my comments earlier with an appreciation for the work that staff has done in that regard. Um, I'm very comfortable with what this tariff is, um, and the work that's gone into it and, um, who it will benefit, which is, uh, the entire, uh, customer portfolio. Uh, that said, I understand, uh, chairman, uh, excuse me, I understand trustee Kelly's concerns that before we approve a tariff, because of the ramifications of, of, of that kind of decision, he wants to be fully familiar and comfortable with it. I don't know if, if trustee Kelly will get there after thirty days, but I'm willing to give him that courtesy. My recommendation is that we do not have a third party involved in that analysis because that's just gonna take us back several steps. I trust the work that the CPS staff has done. But I'm willing to give thirty days and come back and take an affirmative vote on this. Uh, but I would recommend that we have some one-on-ones with any board member who needs additional information. And then our next discussion as a group is in the next board meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other questions or comments?
No, I think with his feedback, I think we're open for the motion.
So, um, it's, we're open for what, what motion, Ms. Gonzalez?
I believe the motion would be to delay the vote for thirty days, um, for board members to refresh their minds in requesting additional information in regards to the support of the tariff.
All right. So that, that's, I'm, uh, I mean, well said. So that's the motion. Or who wants to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right. You say second? Uh, mayor, so the mayor seconded? All right, any discussion?
I think it's been discussed and thank you.
Uh, Ms. Schellman, are we okay on everything?
Yes, I, yes, sir. You can vote on that resolution.
All right. And, and do you wanna restate it and then we'll, we'll call the roll?
I will, uh, trustee Gonzalez proposes, um, that the board delay the vote on the two proposed tariffs for thirty days to allow the board members to be, uh, briefed in more detail on the details of the tariffs and how they work in order to refresh what they may have already known about it and that this be brought back to the board for, uh, discussion and vote at the July board meeting.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Dr. Mackey.
So delaying it, if you're gonna do it, it should be postponed, the motion to, to, to a certain time.
Michelle?
I think delay and postpone, either one would be appropriate. They have virtually the same meaning. But postpone would be fine if you want to do that. If, if Ms. Gonzalez would accept that as amendment, an amendment to her motion.
Yes, I will accept that amendment to my motion as proposed by, uh, Dr. Mackey.
And Doc, and, uh, I guess the mayor needs to okay it too on this stuff.
Yeah, and I, I'm, I'm fine with that. And that's, to be clear, that's at the, the next, uh, scheduled board meeting.
Yeah, we've been talking about thirty days, but we're really talking about taking it up at the July meeting. If somebody knows the date of that meeting, that, we can plug that in, yeah.
July twenty-seventh.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
Ms. Schellman, there's your-
Thank you all.
We have to vote on it, vote on that.
Yes, we do. Um, I will, Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Nuremberg?
Hi.
Chair Steen?
Hi.
Mr. Steen there, if, if you need us, um, to postpone as proposed.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Garza, for that presentation.
Thank you all, board.
We, yeah, we got behind on our time with that. So now let's move to Agenda Item 11, which is scenic loop routing and siding, and that's Mr. Perez.
Good afternoon, trustees. My name is Luis Arzeta. I am the interim senior director of substation transmission. I'm happy to be here to provide you an update of our scenic loop routing and siding project. Uh, Dr. Mackey and trustee Gonzalez, this is a project that, uh, we kicked off, uh, in early twenty nineteen with you. And since that provided a couple of updates, uh, throughout twenty nineteen, one right before our open house and another following the open house. Uh, trustee Kelly and trustee Ke- uh, uh, Steen, um, at the September twenty nineteen Special Board Risk Management Committee meeting, I presented an item of the new PUC requirement for CPS Energy when our transmission line projects are located outside the San Antonio city limit. This project is affected by this requirement, which I'll be presenting here, uh, today. So moving on to, um, page one twelve. So for the objectives, um, we'll be reviewing the certificate of convenience and necessity, which, uh, you'll hear me call it CCN. So a certificate is what is issued by the Public Utility Commission of Texas that states that the public convenience and necessity requires installation, operation, or extension of service. And because we currently already have a CCN, this project will require, um, our request to amend it now that this project will fall, uh, into the jurisdiction of the PUC. Uh, we'll also be reviewing the scenic loop project and then I'll also be providing an update status of our CCN application filing. Moving to the next page, page one thirteen. So for our agenda, uh, I'll be discussing the, this, the PUC requirement and what's, um, what created us to follow this. I'll be providing a project summary. Um, I'll get into the details of our public involvement. Um, I'll be providing a high-level summary of what we're expecting as far as the PUC process and any conclusion of next steps. Moving on to, uh, the next page, page one fourteen. So everything we do here at CPS Energy is in alignment to at least one of our guiding pillars. And our substation and transmission projects are directly in alignment with the reliability pillar that used to be highlighted there on the left. So we're experiencing significant load growth in the northwest region of Bear County in some areas as high as four to seven percent annually. This includes the areas of La Panta, Camp Bolis, the RIM, uh, multi-e-commerce shopping development, and UTSA. And so this project will help us, uh, meet that load, uh, uh, will help us stay in front of this load growth that you, um, that is currently occurring in that area. Moving on to page one fifteen. So back in twenty fifteen, there was a Senate bill, Senate Bill seven, seven-six, um, that got passed. And basically, it states, "At beginning September first of twenty twenty-one, the PUC approval is required for the construction of municipally-owned transmission line facilities located outside the city boundaries." And so what's gonna be different for this project, because it will energize after September first of twenty twenty-one, is that the CPS Energy Board approval is no longer required of the final route and of the project need. And instead, uh, three appointed PUC commissioners, they're appointed by the Texas governor, must approve the project need and the transmission lo- uh, transmission line route for this project. And so that process does give our customers and the landowners an ability to provide input directly to the PUC since that is the approval process for this project. Moving on to page one sixteen. Um, to start off with the, with, with the map on the left. This is, um, a map of our service territory that's highlighted in the orange, uh, line that you see. Um, our study area is depicted by that, uh, light blue shape that you see, um, located there at the top-left, um, side of your map. And so for our project need, northwest Bear County is targeted as a regional development center in the city of San Antonio's SA Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan and is one of the fastest-growing areas around, in and around the city. Um, so currently, the transformers that are serving this area, uh, out of our Harrods Ranch and Los Sierra Substation, uh, will exceed our distribution planning criteria by twenty twenty-four. And so that is what is driving our target end service date of June twenty twenty-four. And some of the distribution lines serving this project area are approximately six to eight times longer than the average lining within our service territory, which leads to more frequent and longer outages. Over the last seven years, the frequency of outages experienced by our customers in this project area is approximately seven times more than the system average and the duration of outages nearly four times more than the system average. In twenty seventeen, the customers serving the project area, which makes up about three percent of our overall system, experienced nearly twenty percent of off-customer interruptions. Over the last seven years, the customers served, um, in this project area have accounted for approximately eleven percent of customer interruptions. And since two thousand and ten, distribution lines serving the scenic loop area have made CPS Energy role-performing distribution linelets for five different years and more than fifty percent of the distribution lines that are serving this area as well. In addition, on two occasions last year in twenty nineteen, we met with, uh, groups of customers, uh, in the area to address the frequent and sustained outages. And it's why this project need is needed to improve our reliability in this area to meet our customers' needs. Moving on to page one seventeen. So there on the left is a little, it's, it's a zoomed-in, um, of that study area that's, that's depicted by the yellow, uh, shade that you see. The boundary is approximately twenty-nine square miles. Uh, there on the left is a red line. That red line is an existing transmission line that we will be looking to routing, uh, to a substation site. Uh, on the map, you'll see some green boxes. Those are road names. Um, there's one road that starts off of Route Ten, that is Burning State Road, heads west and then hits an intersection. That road continues north and it stays the same name as Burning State Road, uh, down to the south of that intersection is scenic loop road and to the west is, is Tutto Borahard Road. And so initially, we identified five initial substation sites. And so we anticipate that the transmission line that we will be seeking the PUC, um, to select a route and approve a route to be approximately five and a half miles, uh, in length. And so one thing that the team has been doing along with our environmental consultant is, is identifying major land and streams. And just a few examples here is we've been identifying habitable structures, homes and neighborhoods, developments. Uh, we've also identified, um, we look to identify conservation units and schools, churches, and cemeteries. And we do all this so that as we, um, route our, our, our- and schools, churches, and cemeteries, and we do all this so that as we, um, route our, our routes, that we try to minimize as much impact as possible as we, um, submit our application, um, to the PUC. Moving to page one eighteen, is a summary, um, a slide of our public involvement. There on the right, you see a picture of the open house that we conducted on October third, twenty nineteen. It was, um, the, the most well-attended open house of our routing and siding project. Uh, since I've been here for, for, for my eighteen years, um, we, we conduct these, as you can see, there is information booths. We conduct these to help inform landowners of the proposed, uh, scenic loop project. Uh, there's booths that show, um, pictures of the substations and transmission structures, as well as some of the routes that we initially laid out, and the substation site. We also use this to educate the public on the PUC process, and we also obtain customer feedback. And today, we have received one hundred and eighty-six questionnaires, um, that we use and we evaluate their input, um, which, their input at times, um, will also, um, um, new alternative substation locations are identified, as well as changes to transmission line route based on landowner input. We've also engaged in numerous public contracts following the open house. We've made many, many calls, and we've discussed with a lot of our customers, as well as engaged with our state and local, uh, governmental, um, staff. Moving on to page one nineteen, um, this right here depicts a high-level, uh, what we anticipate, um, uh, with the PUC process. We'll first start off with, uh, following the application. The next step, um, the next item will be, um, I, intervenors are identified. Um, so any of our customers and landowners in the area that would like to participate in the PUC process and provide to PUC their comments, uh, can, can participate in that process. Uh, because this is a legal administrative process, there will be a discovery period. Um, it's important that we have an adequate number of diverse routes and sites. Um, and so step, uh, item four there, uh, we do not anticipate, but it is a possibility, um, that there is a route adequacy hearing. Next step, uh, item, direct testimony. So we anticipate, um, our staff will be providing testimony around the project need that I just discussed, uh, engineering, design costs. Uh, routing is, our environmental consultants will be, uh, talking about, uh, potential environmental impacts. And then the fourth one, you see there, is our regulatory compliance, and so we, we must ensure that we follow all of the regulatory requirements of this project, as well as notification requirements, which I'll be discussing notification requirements here, here in a bit. Um, item six, other testimony. This is where, um, our landowners, customers that decide to participate and provide, uh, intervening testimony. Um, item seven is the hearing of the merits, and so this is where, um, it's a legal administrative process. Item eight is when the administrative law judge will make a proposal for decision based on all the input and all the testimony that is received on both sides. Item nine is when the PUC commissioners consider, and item ten is when they make the final order and select the final route. We anticipate this process to take approximately twelve months after we file. Moving to page one twenty. These hi, these here highlight, um, what, what we are anticipating the commissioners to consider when they are selecting and evaluating routes. One is cost, uh, they'll be looking, um, to, to minimize costs as much as possible. Others, the number of habitable structures that are proximity to the route and the substation site. Uh, they also look to take, um, advantage of the length of percent of route parallel to compatible rightaways, as well as listen to the landowner's input that is given if they, they participate. And other items, such as the environmental analysis report, that will be part of our application when we submit, um, to the PUC. Going on to page one, one twenty-one, um, this right here is just a diagram of our process. Um, there on the left, we, um, we, we kicked off the project, those three green boxes are the updates that we have provided our operations oversight committee. So today, we're here, I'm here, providing our board of trustees an update before we file, um, that's shown there in the red box, um, before we file to the, uh, to the PUC. And so again, we anticipate that to be about twelve months, and following PUC approval, um, we will be asking a board resolution to begin land acquisition and construction, but again, that is after we receive board approvals, which we anticipate, again, in about twelve months. Going on to page one twenty-two, uh, next step. So we'll be submitting our application to the PUC, and we anticipate doing that around mid-July. Um, when we do this, we will be issuing notices in accordance with regulations, which will be notifying all landowners that are crossed by the transmission line or substation sites, as well as notifying landowners with habitable structures that are within three hundred feet, uh, of, of both the transmission line segments that we have identified for our evaluation, and substation sites. We'll be informing our, uh, uh, agencies and elected officials, and updating our website with major activities and documents. Uh, and once we do this, again, we anticipate beginning the twelve-month PUC, um, process. And that concludes my presentation.
Our schedule substantially, and, uh, one of the thoughts.
Just wondering if that's gonna be virtual or live, you know, the way we're doing it now? Or there is no need for that anymore, maybe, uh, there was never a need for that.
Oh, Ms. Gonzalez, we, uh, something was wrong, and we missed the first part of your comments, you'll have to start over.
I'm sorry, uh, my question was, I recall, and maybe I missed it, but I, I believe I thought that Dr. Mackey and I were supposed to participate in public input, uh, is this not the case?
So that's, that's the case when our projects are located within the, within the city limits.
Okay, so we don't have to discuss that, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
That's correct.
All right, any other questions or comments?
I have a couple, uh, Chairman Steen, um, over on slide one fifteen, uh, it says that this is a new procedure that, uh, Puck has put in place, uh, as I understand it, and so applies to facilities located outside of the city boundary. So in other words, if this project were totally within the city of San Antonio, would CPS be making this decision? Uh, and by virtue of the fact that it is not in the city of San Antonio, Puck would be making the decision, is that a true statement?
That is actually true, yes, sir.
And what, what do you do if it's in both, that's partly in the city and partly, uh, outside the city?
So that is, that is something that we did discuss with PUC staff. In May last year, we had a, we had a workshop. Um, and during the discussion, it was identified that it's, that it's, it's not known yet. Luckily, this project is, doesn't fall into that type of situation. Um, but we did, we did touch on that with PUC staff, and we agreed that, should we ever encounter a project like that, that we would get together, uh, before, before kicking off a project. Um, but luckily, this project does not fall under that situation.
Okay, and the other question I have, where you say outside the city boundaries, does that include or exclude the ETJ?
That excludes the ETJ, it is, it is, it is the city boundaries, we sit in the boundaries of San Antonio.
Okay, so it could be in the ETJ but not in the city, and then it would fall within Puck's responsibility, right?
Um, to make sure I understood the question, so if we had a project that, because part of this project is in the ETJ, but because it is outside the San Antonio city limits, it's, it's, it's requiring us to go to the PUC. If, so, so ETJ doesn't count as, as being able to follow our internal, our internal board process. ETJ is outside city limits, and so we have to follow the PUC approval process.
Okay, and I think, uh, the other question I have then, the final decision of this, where you're over on slide one nineteen, and you say final order under item ten, I assume that final order then will come out of Puck?
That's correct, the PUC will have a final order that picks the final route, uh, for us to seek to build the line on, and substation site.
Okay, so Puck is the final authority in this thing, yeah?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Shelman.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Kelly, any other questions or comments? All right, as I mentioned, uh, a minute ago, um, we've fallen behind in our schedule, and so I've been communicating with our CEO about how we might, uh, get back on schedule, and, 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 uh, Ms. Gold Williams, would you want to comment on Agenda Items twelve and thirteen, about whether we might be able to? Okay, go ahead.
These are, um, these are complimentary reports. At the last board meeting, the board heard from the operational areas, ASMO, the Distribution Transmission Group, our Power Generation, and the reports that we have for today are complimentary to support our operational needs for the summer. So, um, we, you heard the core of it, and what we can do is just turn these into quick written reports. The, the presentations are included, we'll just provide some context on the, on the cover, and give that to the board, and if there are any questions or follow-up, we can, we can do that at a later date.
Any, any input from the trustees on that to, to try to, um, get back on schedule? All right, I think we will do that, and thank you to all those who were prepared to make those presentations. I know they put a lot of work into it, but we'll, we'll, we'll proceed that alternate way. There are no objections. So let's move to Agenda Item fourteen, which are committee reports. And what we have there, we have the Operations Oversight Committee meeting held on May fourteenth, twenty twenty. Um, Dr. Mackey is the chair. We, we had the Technology and Information Committee meeting held on May fourteenth, twenty twenty. Uh, the chair is Janie Gonzalez. And then we had, we had the, the OOC and TI, TNI, which is Technology Innovation, a line with Subcommittee Meeting held on that same day, uh, May fourteenth, twenty twenty. I know they're written reports, and, um, uh, is it acceptable, Dr. Mackey and Ms. Gonzalez, would you all like just to submit those to be attached to the minutes, or would you like to read your reports?
It's acceptable for us to attach, uh, the reports to the minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez, how about you, Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
All right, okay, then we'll, then we can proceed, uh, to the executive session. Uh, Ms. Shelman?
Uh, at this time, the board will, um, move into executive session to discuss matters that have been posted under several, uh, sections of Texas statutes, including Section five-five-one of the Texas Government Code, um, Section five-five-one oh-seven-one, attorney-client matters, real property under five-five-one oh-seven-two, personnel under five-five-one oh-seven-four, economic development under five-five-one oh-eight-seven, competitive matters under five-five-one oh-eight-six, or to deliberate regarding security audits and devices under Section five-five-one oh-eight-nine. Just to make clear what we're going to do, we will move into executive session. When we conclude, we will come back into open session and conclude this meeting. After that, the board will, uh, conduct a meeting of the San Antonio Energy Public Facility Corporation. So it is now four oh-two PM, the board will move into executive session to discuss the matters that, um, I have indicated have been posted.
And, and just to be clear, what, what those of us on the board are gonna do is hang up, disconnect this line and call back the, the, the number and, uh, the name that was provided to us earlier again in a text. So we're gonna call in that way, uh, to enter, into the executive session.
That's right.
Uh, this is John Steen, and, uh, we're, we're reconvening to open session, and I'd like to ask Carolyn Shelman to do a roll call.
Yes, sir. Um, Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Here.
Mayor Nuremberg? Chair Steen?
Here.
Mr. Steen, we have a, a quorum. Would you like for me to go ahead and bring us out of executive session?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, um, the board has now resumed the open session meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees, having concluded an executive session during which matters that were posted, as described, were discussed. No other matters were discussed, no votes were taken. It is now five-twenty PM, and the board is ready to resume its exec, uh, open session.
Thank you very much, we're back in open session then. Um, the only thing that remains on the agenda is Item sixteen, which, which is adjournment, so I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
A move by Mr. Kelly?
Seconded by trustee Gonzalez.
Seconded by trustee Gonzalez, any discussion, all in favor, or I guess, uh, I guess we can do this by voice, folks, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the meeting's adjourned. So now, um, the regular meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees is gonna be followed immediately by a meeting of the San Antonio Energy Acquisition Public Facility Corporation. Um, I, I would ask, I, I wonder if we need, we have taken any kind of a break? Does anybody need a break between these meetings?
Not me.
All right. Dr. Mackey, Ms. Gonzalez, anybody?
No.
No, I'm good, sir.
All right, then I'm gonna go ahead, um, correct, I'm gonna, uh, uh, everybody, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the, the PFC meeting?
Yes.
All right, so I'm gonna call, call to order the June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, meeting of the Senate, SA Energy Corp, Acquisition Public Facility Corporation. Um, first item on our agenda, oh, I guess I should do, uh, a, 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 again, do a roll call to, of who's here, so go ahead, Ms. Shelman.
Hi, um, Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Here.
Mayor Nuremberg, I presume, is not here. Um, Paula Gold Williams?
Here.
Chair Steen?
Here.
All right, the.
Actually, John Steen, not Chair Steen in this case.
Uh, the, uh, so that's the, item one, item two is public comment. Um, this is, of course, that provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on any of this meeting's posted agenda items, and for this meeting, we do not have any registered speakers. Uh, we always like to remind members of the public that they do not have to attend a board meeting to communicate with the board or with CPS Energy. There's several different communication channels. They can email us at feedback@cpsenergy.com, they can call us at two-one-zero-three-five-three-two-two-two-two, or they can, uh, send us a letter at P.O. Box seventeen-seventy-one, San Antonio, Texas, seven-eight-two-nine-six. Um, the third item on our agenda is, um, the approval of the minutes of, of the PFC meeting held on January fourteenth, twenty twenty. Um, I, I know those were distributed in advance. Has everybody had an opportunity to review those minutes, and if so, do I have a motion to approve?
I approve.
Oh, it sounded like Dr. Mackey got in first there, so Dr. Mackey made the motion to approve, and was that you, Mr. Kelly, second?
Yeah, yes.
Seconded by Mr. Kelly, uh, any discussion? Uh, all in fav, well, let's do a roll call. Go ahead, Ms. Shelman.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Gold Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Steen?
Aye.
All, uh, unanimously approved.
Thank you. Let's move to Agenda Item four, accepted of the audited financials, and it shows the presenter's sponsor is Gary Gold, uh, and then also, uh, so, so, Mr. Gold, are you, are you there? Do you wanna, do you wanna take us into this?
Uh, yes, sir. So, um, I'm pleased to, uh, um, I'm pleased to announce that, uh, we've completed the work on, uh, the PFC audit with, uh, um, with Baker Tilly and, and C.C. Garcia performing that audit work, and joining us today is Jody Dawson from Baker Tilly, and Carmen Garcia from C.C. Garcia, to present the results of the fiscal year twenty twenty audit with PFC. And so with that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Jody Dawson.
Thank you very much, let me first make sure everyone can hear me all right.
Yes, we can.
Okay. So we've got a short. So we've got a short handout here that starts on page five of the PDF, document for the meeting. And really, what I want to do today is just go over a brief overview of the audit, similar to what we've done in the past. So on Slide six, we touch on the topics here, the audit overview, the required communications to those charged with governance, any internal control communications, and then any questions we may have. So moving to page seven. As far as an overview of the audit, we start our audit planning process based on your processes and internal controls, identifying where are the key transaction cycles, where are the volume of transactions going on. And this is really important for your organization because your transactions are very unique, unlike most other organizations. So we don't want to spend our time or your time focusing on areas that really aren't significant to your financial statement. So some of the areas here that we focus on are the actual financial reporting, the information that ends up in the schedules and the disclosures at the end of the report, the prepaid assets and that amortization schedule, investment valuation, the revenue recognition process, and then, as I said, those disclosures. So we're really looking, as I said, at the key processes and the procedures and how those transactions are recorded and approved. And within the financial statement disclosures, a couple of the things that we're really focused on is anything that is more complex or unique transactions, making sure that those are described appropriately and clearly for the reader. So if we move then to page eight. As far as specific results from this year's audit, the audit went very well. It was conducted in accordance with the standards required and as planned. When we laid out our planning process, there were no changes required and no difficulties during the audit process. Management and staff were not only very cooperative but flexible, given what we've gone through this year, and able to provide us everything necessary. We were able to stay on schedule. And the last day of our field work, as we would say, was middle of May. But as you're aware, our work was completed remotely this year because of the COVID-19 situation. And this last bullet I don't want to breeze over, there were no adjusting journal entries as a result of this year's audit process. That's not something to be taken lightly. That's a really high bar. And so we want to note that, that means you're getting good information throughout the year. Moving on then to page nine. As I said, the audit was performed in accordance with the generally accepted auditing standards. And that starts with the assessment of the inherent risk of the different transaction cycles or processes, and then looks at your control processes as we do our planning. So some of those areas, again, here that we look at, the prepaid assets, investment valuation, revenues, the debt transactions, considering what's the inherent risk within each of those areas, and then what do your controls put in place to mitigate those risks? And that's how we design our tests. The next page, on page 10 of your packet, is kind of the big thing that you're looking for, is your financial statements received, what we call an unmodified or a clean opinion. So that's the highest level of assurance that we can give. And that lets you and any outside readers know that in looking at these statements, you're getting a fair presentation of the financial position and results of operations for the organization. The next couple, three or four pages in the handout here, go through what we call the required communication. There are several items that the AICPA requires the auditor to communicate to those charged with governance. And so what we've done is laid out the area here to the left, and then any information that's specific we need to report to the right. So on page 11, we talk about accounting policies. Your accounting policies are outlined in Note 1 to the financial statements. And there were no new standards this year that had a significant impact on these statements that were required to discuss. Moving to page 12, if there were any difficulties, we would be required to report those or any uncorrected misstatements that were waived or passed during the process. There was nothing to report in either of these areas. On page 13, if we had any disagreements with management or findings or concerns that we wanted you to be aware of, we would report those here. And again, this is the no news is good news section of the report. There's nothing to report. On page 14, again, if there were any material corrected misstatements, so any adjustments identified that were material to the statements, we would outline those here. And there were no adjustments as part of the audit. Management does provide us, on page 15, we note there's some representations as part of the audit process. There's a rather lengthy letter that they sign saying they've given us all the information, they've provided us the minutes to your meeting, any contracts, any accounting policies, those kind of things. A copy of this is included in your final documents, and we had no concerns with the representations provided. On page 16, if there were any consultations with other accountants, looking into how to record a specific transaction or how to present something within the financial statements, we would let you know about that. And we're not aware of any consultations. And then on page 17, if there was anything that would be a concern related to our independence in order to perform the audit, we would have to disclose that here or any additional services that we provided that are not part of the audit, we would outline those here. And there was nothing that would impair our independence, which is something that obviously we monitor very carefully. On page 18, we always like to touch on the internal controls because we know that's important to you. As I said, as part of planning the audit, we walk through the processes and controls that management has in place in order to help us focus where we need to do testing and then design those specific tests. As part of that process, nothing came to our attention that we felt would be a significant deficiency or a material weakness in internal controls. So again, very positive to report. So that's my highlight. Again, as I said, I felt the audit went very well this year. Good to work with the team again, and they worked very well with us to adjust to the unique circumstances of 2020. So I want to thank them and appreciate all that. Before I open it up for questions, I wanted to let Carmen, if she's on the line, share any observations she had from the audit process.
Yes, I'm here, Carmen Garcia. I concur with Jody's presentation. We worked on the financial statement portion of this audit, and everything went very smoothly. We had no adjustments. It's a clean opinion. We're very pleased. And thank management for their help and their assistance.
Ms. Dobson? Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Ms. Dobson, this is John Steen. Are you at the point where you're taking questions and comments?
Absolutely.
Good. Thank you so much for your good work, as always. I know, remind me, we did the, we did that special internal controls audit. When did we do that? Was it last year?
That was last year.
Last year. And did that, having, did you participate in that yourself?
I participated in the planning and the review portions of that, yes.
Right. But did going through that, and now you're, here we are a year later, and you're doing the regular audit, did that in any way shape how you did the audit in terms of how, you know, you just talked to us about internal control communications? And that you didn't come across any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies? But was it, tell me how that internal control audit that we did would have shaped what you did this year, if at all?
So last year, as part of doing the integrated audit and giving an opinion on internal controls, the first step in that process was that your management team had to do a deeper dive into documenting their processes and controls, and then test those themselves to provide us the information that we needed to do our audit of the internal controls. So I think in laying that foundation last year, this year, when we asked for the documentation of internal controls that's needed for the financial audit, it was at a deeper level than it may have otherwise been because of that process last year. So I think that did provide us maybe a little more insight than we normally would have had into starting that planning process. And then, you know, from there, really, we went through the same process as we would for the financial audit, but having that little bit more detailed information to look at.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
A couple of things, and again, maybe I missed it. If I look at the minutes correctly, was in this Delores part of it? And have we voted already for Gary to replace her on this committee?
Gary's not replacing her on the committee at this time. He's just helping to present the financials.
Do we need to have, because I see her name on her, so I guess my question is, is there a need for action, I guess?
Not right at this moment, ma'am. We're working through our transition, so we will come back to you.
Okay, I just wanted to check. And then my other question is, if we have these controls in place, why is it that we missed Mark Granato's situation?
That is on the trust, and this is on the, yeah, the pre-putty asset.
So the financials are not tied together? So like, one doesn't affect the other?
No.
Yeah, this is.
Just wanted to make sure, ask that question.
Right. This is a completely separate corporation. But also, anyway, we need to, if we're going to discuss that, we would probably need to. Anyway, this is, yeah, this is a different entity altogether. We've kind of changed gears, and this is the PFC. All right. Any other questions or comments about the audited financials?
We do need a vote to accept the financials.
Right. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the audited financials.
I move.
Move by Mr. Kelly?
Second, trustee Gonzalez.
All right. Seconded by Ms. Gonzalez. Any discussion, any further discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Gold Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Steen?
Aye.
It is approved unanimously by those members present.
Thank you, Ms. Dobson, for your good work on this. And thank you, Ms. Garcia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move to Agenda Item 5, which is Directors and Officers DNO Insurance Program Renewal. Mr. Orlando Flores.
So, trustee Steen, thanks a lot for your time. Can you now hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, excellent then. Okay, good afternoon, and thanks a lot for your time. In addition to the Interpassage Management and Solutions Team, we do a lot of work around the risk. But the thing that we also do is that we manage the insurance program for both CPS Energy and the PFC. We use a full suite of insurance products that help us reduce and mitigate our risk exposure. But for today, the purpose of today's presentation is, similar to what we've done in years past, is to provide an overview of the PFC Directors and Officers Insurance of DNO, as well as request your approval to renew the policy. So as we go on to page 21 of your packet, we'll do that by looking at the objectives and takeaways. And we'll provide first an overview of the market conditions and the benchmarking that we use to ensure that we get competitive pricing. Plus, once we walk through the current and recommended renewal program, we'll also go through and ask your approval for the renewal policy. And so going on to page 22 of your packet, we'll take a look at the agenda slide, and we'll take a look at the, we'll provide an overview of the program. We'll do a comparison between the CPS Energy and the PFC DNO. We'll look at benchmarking. Then we'll look at the renewal program. And then we'll step into and request your approval. So going on to page 23 of your packet, an overview of the DNO Insurance Program. Just want to point out that while the members for CPS Energy and the PFC are the same, again, as was mentioned earlier, the PFC is a public nonprofit corporation, and it's a separate entity for CPS Energy. And so since the beginning of the PFC in 2007, we've had the DNO policy in place. Now, again, the policy, what it does, it provides coverage for the PFC, not only the Board of Directors, but also the officers. And what it does, it protects against legal claims for wrongful acts, breach of duty, misstatements, or neglect. So going on to page 24 of your packet, the insurance comparison. As we've done in years past, we've compared and we've contrasted, and we've also, we've talked about the similarities and differences between the DNO policies of CPS Energy, which is what you see on the left-hand side, and the PFC, which is on the right-hand side. And again, while the coverages are the same as far as what they protect against, the PFC, if you notice, has a higher limit. And if you recall, that's because the PFC doesn't enjoy the same common law protections afforded a monitively owned utility like CPS Energy. Another note to mention, if you notice, also is the premium differences between the two policies. Now, driving the differences in the policies is that when a carrier looks at quoting a premium, they'll look at the size of the organization, as well as the number of employees, as well as the scope of the entity. And so thus, given the smaller size of the PFC, and because it's limited in scope, it's going to have a lower premium when compared to the CPS Energy DNO policy. So going on to the next page, 25 of your packet, here we'll look at benchmarking and market conditions. As we do every year, we work with our insurance broker, Mars, on benchmarking and getting competitive rates for our renewal program. Now, based on Mars' market intelligence on the DNO insurance market, they're actually expecting a premium rate increase in the 20% to 40% range. Now, what they indicated was the drivers behind the increases were just the class action lawsuits that were occurring in the market or in the industry, plus also just the financial uncertainty from the COVID-19. As I mentioned in the previous slides, the PFC is a small entity with limited purpose. And because of that, we expect the PFC to be in the low range of increases as far as like premium rates, and very similar to what we saw last year. Now, as we go on to page 26 of your packet, here we'll look at the current and proposed renewal programs. And so on the left-hand, you'll show a current program which expires at the end of July, at the end of July, and has an annual premium of a little over $58,000. Now, on the right-hand side, you'll see that we'll have the renewal program with the same limits and deductible. And right now, we're estimating a renewal of just under $70,000. Now, keep in mind that while the $70,000 estimate represents almost a 20% increase, the good thing is it's on the low end of the market predictions of 20% to 40%. And that's in line with what we've seen in the years past. So given the positive track record, let's go on to the next page on your packet, page 27, where we'll request your approval on the DNO Insurance Program. As you can see, on page 27, it's a summary of the key points, key points of the renewal program that we'll request that the board approve. And just a quick note, as always, we want to note that the premium and deductible will be paid by the PFC. And with that, I'll pause and take any questions.
This is John Steen. I know that's a question that Kelly asked frequently, but on the deductible cost. You're representing that to us, but where is that provided? How would we be assured of that?
Well, I guess whenever there is a claim, we'll go through the PFC to submit the payment or to make the deductible payment. It'll be paid out of the PFC fund.
Right. But it's.
Mr. Steen?
Yeah, help me with.
There is, in the draft resolution, which is on page 31, one of the recitals in the resolution provides that the cost of the premium and deductible will be paid by the corporation.
Oh, good. Thank you for pointing that out. And where is that again?
It's the, um, it's page 31.
And it's towards the very bottom of the resolution. It's the, which is the following page, and it's towards the very bottom of the resolution, the last minute.
Oh, it says, where is the, it's the, as they say, ready for this, the penultimate recital, but it says, whereas the corporation's Board of Directors acknowledged the cost of the policy premium and deductible will be paid by the SA Energy acquisition of Public Soddy Corporation. That's where it is, all right.
And we do need a motion approving this resolution, adopting it if the board chooses to do that.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. This is Paula.
All right. The motion by Ms. Gold Williams, is there a second?
Second.
I'll second, Trustee Gonzalez.
Uh-oh, I think Ed got in ahead of you, so.
I will give it to Ed. I will fight him on this one.
Mr. Kelly, second. Is there any further discussion? All right, would you please call the roll, Ms. Schellman?
Dr. Mackey? Dr. Mackey? Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Gold Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Steen?
Aye.
Did we miss?
I'll try Dr. Mackey again. Yeah, well, I'll try one more time. Dr. Mackey, are you in favor of this resolution?
Ah.
There we go.
All right. Everyone present is in favor.
All right. Let's move to the next item, Resolution to Approve Bylaws Amendment. That's you, Ms. Schellman.
It is. This is a fairly simple fix to a problem that we have had whereby if a board member who's typically appointed for a two-year term, if we have a board member who assumes their position midterm, and they get appointed for a two-year term, then every time we go over to the city to get people reappointed, we aren't getting everybody at once. So what we're wanting to do is to align the terms of the board members so that they will have two-year terms, and that if you start in midterm, you will only get appointed for a year, and then after that, you'll get appointed for a two-year term. So I said it's a simple fix.
Body on the same cycle, yeah.
Yes, that's right. And it will be easier for us, CPS Energy, it's also easier for the city, they will just have one fewer thing that they have to vote on. So I said it was easy. Ms. Pullis has done a lot of work trying to get this simply stated, and I think she's done a very nice job in the bylaws, but what we need you to adopt is a resolution that is on page 36 of the materials. And it would, by adopting this resolution, you would be approving the bylaw amendment that is shown also in your packet. We redlined it to show you the changes that will be made, but the only change is the one that I described.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the bylaws amendment?
Better hurry, Janie.
I got it, there's my motion.
All right. Motion, thank you. Motion by Ms. Gonzalez, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Mackey. Any discussion? All right, go ahead and call the roll, please.
Yes, Dr. Mackey? Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Gold Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Steen?
Aye.
Dr. Mackey, I'm not sure I heard you. Did you vote in favor of this?
Yes.
Yes, all right. Everyone has approved it, Mr. Steen.
All right. Let's move to Agenda Item Seven, which is a closeout. And I had something on this, I wanted to follow up a little bit on the point that Ms. Gonzalez made. So we did have one of our directors, Dolores Lindsey-Jones, who separated from the company. And as part of that separation process, did she formally resign from this board?
We have an agreement with her that is signed, she did not write a letter to us?
Right. I think, I think, I think that's, it's probably, we're down the road there, we can't do it, but that's probably helpful to go ahead and get a letter so we can put that in our file, and we know that on a certain date, she was no longer a director of the corporation.
She has refused to write us a letter.
Oh, okay.
Of any type.
All right, all right. Then I'll turn to Carolyn Schellman and put her on the spot. Do you think we ought to take any action, or is it, it seems like by not doing anything, she's still a director, we direct, we elected her, right?
She was appointed by the, by the City Council. And Sandra, Sandra, why don't you speak? Sandra is showing me something here that I haven't looked at.
I'm just looking at the bylaws, and there is a provision for removing a director for cause, or at any time without cause. So, but since this wasn't posted as an agenda item, I question whether it was appropriate to do right now.
We are still working on some last-minute items with her, sir, so we plan to bring forward an item for the PFC to take some quick action to clean up the records, but she is documented as not being at the meetings, and she is not being triggered as voting. We've had this before when we did not have a CFO, so we will come in and clean up the issue for you, but we are in transition with her.
All right. Yeah, I think that would, it's something that's easy to overlook, but it really, I think the formality of having someone resign so they're no longer on the board, I think that would be a good thing to have.
And just for clarity, the bylaws provide that the removal is done by the governing body of the city, so we will continue to look at that in light of everything else and figure out our path forward there.
And probably what we could do is replace, when she, when the CFO is replaced, that person would join this board, and we could do it all at once.
Well, but then, like, you know, in a way, she's still on the board, or she is on the board unless some action's taken.
Sir, she's in transition probably to the end of July, so you're not really out of compliance, I don't think. It will be documenting that transition.
But wasn't she still technically, I guess what Mr., our chairman is alluding to, or at least I would think that legally, we have to send her, so we have to give her a notice to participate because she's still technically on the board as a director?
If someone doesn't come, if someone doesn't come to a meeting, like a board member, they're still active on the payroll in transition, and they don't come to the meeting, you don't normally have to do anything.
So we don't have to give them a notification, is what you're saying?
We have, we will have all the documentation tied out by the end of July 31st, and so our documentation that we have, she does not have to send us anything. We have a document that will serve as the separation document.
All right. A simple way is just to ask her to write a letter. We can write, and she can sign it, just as I hereby formally resign from the Board of Directors of the.
She has absolutely, she has absolutely refused to sign anything on her part.
All right.
I have asked multiple times.
All right. Okay, anybody have anything else on the closeout? Actually, Gary, you're supposed to sort of close out and review action items. Do you have anything?
No, there were no action items noted during the meeting.
Okay. All right. Well, I think that brings us to Agenda Item Eight, which is the adjournment. So, Ms. Kelly?
I think it's Dr. Mackey's turn, but.
Dr. Mackey? We have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kelly. I think we can do this by voice. Vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. The meeting's adjourned. Thank you, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.